Turn your microphone on, please.
No, thank you. Call to order. Do you want to take a roll call or you got us?
Mayor Leh.
Here.
Mayor Protam Dickinson.
Here.
Councilmember Fahy.
Here.
Councilmember Hamilton.
Here.
Councilmember Hefner.
Here.
Councilmember Kern.
Here.
Councilmember Bierman.
Here.
All right, let's take a minute to say the pledge of allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands unitedly under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thanks. Is there a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
They're moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any votes? The next item is public comments on items not on the agenda and items on the consent agenda. I wanted to take just a minute tonight because there was a little bit of perhaps confusion last time and I don't want that. So first of all, this is a part of our agenda. And people have a chance to speak on two different topics. One is items not on the agenda and one is items on the consent agenda. The consent agenda, if you have the agenda in front of you is the five items that are on there. Those are typically matters that are sort of non-controversial, don't require an ordinance or resolution independently, and we vote on them as a group. But you're welcome to talk as to any of those. Our custom is that if any council member would like to take one of those items off of the consent agenda, we can. But if not, we don't. And so you have an opportunity to talk about any of those if you want, or try to convince one or more of the council members to pull off an item off the consent agenda. The second thing is that you're welcome to talk or make comments about items that are not on the agenda. That would be not the items that are on the agenda. So if there are items that are on the agenda, those are things we do not allow people to talk about. I hope that makes sense. But I would say, you know, and that's a matter of fundamental fairness, because people will get a chance to talk about those things later. And you don't get a chance to sort of bring something up out of order. It's more important, I think, when you're dealing with quasi judicial matters than we are tonight. And why is that? It's because quasi judicial matters are pretty fundamentally different from others. And I know it's, I've said this before, but I think it bears repeating for people in the room, people who are on Zoom or watching on, eventually watching on YouTube or channel eight, or outside, or downstairs, where we have places for people. The reason why that's important is it's really important for us as council members not to, or to focus only on the evidence and the information that is presented in connection with the hearing and these proceedings. What does that include? Includes the application that somebody makes, includes support for the application, includes the materials that the staff provided to us. It includes, sometimes it will include minutes from various quasi judicial boards and commissions that we have. Includes the comments that many of you and others have provided by email to us, which we of course can't respond to because of this rule, but we have all read and there's a lot of them. And thank you very much for providing them, because they are very helpful to me and others. But we have to wait for that proceeding to start, and I will, you'll know when that starts. But you can't speak out of turn and present information about what's on that quasi judicial matter at this point, because it's literally not going to be a part of the record. And if you're like most people, you've thought a little bit about the comments you're going to make, no matter how eloquent and brilliant and on point and convincing either for or against the application, we can't as a council consider it. In fact, it's a violation of the Constitution and of our ordinances to do so. So it's just hot air if you do it. And I hate saying that, but that's really what it is. And I don't want any of you to have to waste the hot air, especially when we have probably so many people here who want to speak. So a couple of other things that I think are useful to mention. One, I think I said, we've got extra room based on our big crowd the last time. We have room right outside of our council chambers. There's a TV up there. You can hear the poll proceeding there. As I understand it, down in room downstairs, Spruce Room, there's also overflow seating, and you can go there as well. You can go there if you really don't want to sit in this room and just sort of spread out. But what we're going to try to do, this is pretty, pretty full in here, and I think we already have a couple of people out in the hall. If someone is speaking and they're not able, they're not coming from inside here, we have our fire marshal here. She can raise her hand.
Out in the lobby.
Oh, they're outside, okay. Well, she can't, you'll see her out there. We'll be glad to, when your name is called, bring you here. And probably if you could make room for that person by stepping out and giving that person a place until they get called, that would be good. We're going to try to make this as orderly as we can. The other thing we're going to do tonight is we're going to do an on-deck call. So if you're not up, but you are next in line, you will hear our clerk, Meredith Muth, say that you're on deck and get ready to come and speak. When you speak, you've got three minutes to do so, or if you pool time, six minutes, that is, if you pool time with one or more people, you can have up to six minutes. There is a clock, you'll see the clocks on either side. It only says three minutes, so for the people who get six, she restarts it at three minutes. And I think on Zoom, there's also a clock that's available for you to look at there, just so you keep it within that time. We've got a lot of people speaking, and we're going to be pretty strict about those three, six minutes. We may let you finish your breath. But that's about all we will. And I semi joke about that because I'm a lawyer and because I have spoken in front of the 10th Circuit. And the 10th Circuit, when you hit your time limit, stops you in mid-breath and you're done. We're not quite that way, but, but we do want to honor that as a matter of fairness and as a matter of democracy, trying to keep as many people being able to speak as possible. Just because you have three minutes or six minutes does not mean you have to use all of the three minutes or six minutes. You don't get a reserve any time, but if, if you speak shorter than that, there's nothing obviously wrong with that. Not going to discourage you for speaking the whole time if you've got much to say, that's fine, too. If you find yourself agreeing with somebody who's just spoken, and that happens when you've got a lot of people, it's fine, it's fine to say, well, I don't need to speak, or it's fine to come up and say, I agree with the last speaker, or I agree with Joe or Mary or whatnot. There's nothing wrong with that either. Again, that can move things along, but it's not necessary. Everybody gets an opportunity if you'd like. If you have made your comment and are willing to give your place up for somebody else in the room to sit, that would be nice. Again, not required, but we're a small town, and that's a nice thing to do. All, you know, statements and opinions are welcome. We do appreciate them, listen to them. Some cases, some of us write them down and follow up with them later on, and so encourage you to be a part of that. But going back to where we were at the very beginning of this, two topics. One is items on the consent agenda, and the other is items that are not on the regular agenda. So with that, Meredith is going to take us through people.
Our first speaker.
Wait, one, one more thing. If by chance the clerk says the name incorrectly, would you please, please tell us your name as it's actually stated? People make, my name is Leh, L-E-H. It's often that people mess that up, and I don't like it. And there's no reason why any of you should have your name misstated more than once up here. The second thing is if you would speak into the microphone and loudly enough, because we've got an interpreter who is doing work here and has told me in the past for reasons that I sometimes am surprised, that my voice isn't loud enough. And if my voice isn't loud enough, sometimes others won't be loud enough, too. So if you'll do that. If you want to speak and you have not yet filled out a card to do so, please get one. I think they are out in the hallway right outside the door. Throw one out and bring it to the clerk. If you intend to pool your time, you need to put the name or names of people whose time you intend to, to count as part of the pooling and write them down. Those people need to be either at the hearing and able to raise their hand when the time comes, or on Zoom and able to indicate there. So I think I've got it all now. Thank you. I won't interrupt you again, sorry.
Our first speaker is Maxine Most. She's pooling her time with Tim Stalker, so she will get six minutes. Greg Maring is on deck.
Hi, Maxine Most, I live at 640 West Lyndon Street. Usually I'm plenty loud enough. Okay, I'm Maxine Most, I live at 640 West Lyndon Street. I'm here to talk tonight about behavior, particularly the council members' behavior in terms of violating rules, guidelines, and campaign finance disclosures, also public meetings. Now, I am talking about the guidelines, rules, and behavior. I'm not talking about the specific issues. Some of these guidelines, rules, and behaviors are going to apply to issues on the agenda, but I am making no comment on those particular issues. First thing I want to say is that Mayor Protam Dickinson failed to file his two required campaign disclosures on November 3rd and December 12th. According to our laws and rules in Louisville, it is the campaign, campaign individual or the committee's responsibility to know all the rules and regulations. And in the primer, it says it at least four times. I stopped counting it four times. The failure to file reports on or before report deadline will result in penalties of $50 per day until the report is filed, including weekends and holidays, even if your committee has no activity during the reporting period. I don't think it's funny, Caleb, so quit smiling. According to my calculations, you owe the city $8,950 and counting. And what I want to know is, why do we have a member of the council who has violated campaign finance laws sitting up there? We don't know who donated to his campaign, and he's voting on issues that are important to the city. And I don't understand why this isn't being enforced. Why do I have to do this homework? Whose job is it to make sure that people are abiding by campaign finance rules? That's the first thing. The second thing is quasi judicial responsibilities. As I stated, just stated, this is a process concern, not a content concern. There was a, interesting that Gregory Manning is on deck, because there was a Facebook post that was addressed him last night that said, Gregory Manning, for what it's worth, I am told by both council and the applicant that feel it's critical to have as much in-person support as possible. If you can, you'd add value. I'd like to know who on the council reached out to someone in the community and said that they need support for the applicant at tonight's meeting. That is a clear violation of the quasi judicial rules. And since you just gave us a great rendition of why that's so important, Chris, I'd like to know who did that, and they should speak up and tell us now and then recuse themselves from voting tonight. And speaking of recusals, I'm sure you saw the letter that was written by, again, Mayor Protam, not picking on him, but he's done it, to a resident that was, that was forwarded to the council that explicitly communicates details of the proposal that is before you tonight to vote on. And that is a clear violation, again, of the quasi judicial rules, right? The, the standard answer when you're doing quasi judicial inquiries is to say, I can't thank you for your comments, I can't talk about it, not to go, go through a whole litany of all the specific issues and why they should matter to you. And, you know, sadly, this is not the first time that Mayor Dickinson, Mayor Protam Dickinson either doesn't understand the rules or chooses to not abide by them. It reeks of privilege, the privilege of, oh, I don't really have to follow the rules because, you know what, I'm either so special a person, or I just have entitlement. And, you know, speaking of privilege, apparently, there were three council members at a, who were seen at a bar in town after last Tuesday night's special meeting. Now, I sat on this council for two years, and during that two years, it was absolutely clear that no, that, that you didn't go out and socialize in groups of more than two people because of the appearance of impropriety. This is particularly important, because we are in the middle of the most important, one of the most important land use decision hearings we are having. And in the middle of that hearing process, the open hearing process, three council members decided to go out and have a beer. You know, I don't really think that I should have to stand up here and say this stuff, but I do know that for the two years I was on council under two different mayors, these things did not go on, these issues were not happening. And I would recommend that, given the fact that, that Mayor Protam Dickinson has been on, this is his second term on the council, and he was put in place to replace our former mayor Protam Deb Fahy, who I worked with, who was my co-ward representative, who I did not agree with many times. But the one thing I know about Deb Fahy is she doesn't violate the rules, she doesn't push them around, and she doesn't exercise any kind of privilege. And I think what we're seeing is the worst kind of demonstration of honestly, of white wealth privilege that I have seen in a long time. I think whoever, whoever communicated with the person who posted that thing on Facebook needs to recuse themselves from the hearing tonight. And I, again, wipe the smirk off your face, Mayor Protam. You should, you should step off the dais until you get your finance, your campaign finance reportings cleared, until you've paid the city the almost $9,000 that you owe them. And you should actually step down and let Deb Fahy retake her position as Mayor Protam, because we know we can trust her to follow the rules. Thank you.
Next is Greg Maring, and on deck is Sherri Summer.
Thanks, Greg Maring, Louisville, Ward 3. Really, I just wanted to get up and first welcome, Tim. You got quite a cold reception at the last meeting. It was really disheartening to see that, I know how hard all of you work, I know I myself ran and lost and was told I was in good hands with Diedrick and Barbara, and clearly I'm glad you guys are sitting up there and not me and don't have to listen to crap like that. So really, I want to thank all of you for, for everything you do, and I don't need to pool my time, I'm done.
While we're waiting, thank you. If I could have just a moment. It really is important for people not to clap or who, or whatever. It's, I understand when you agree with somebody or, or disagree and boo. It's kind of human nature to do some of that. But the thing that it does is, it does tend to discourage other people from talking. It's, especially if you happen to be the only person that's supporting a position, it's, it's intimidating. A lot of people haven't been here before, I would suspect, and maybe their first time talking. So if you could just, just hold it, I'd appreciate that. You can pat somebody on the back or whatnot during the break. Please, floor to shores.
Thank you, Sherri Summer, Louisville. I am not talking about the current application tonight, I'm talking about the democratic process, the quasi judicial process, and some concerns that I have. As I, you know, I attend many, many meetings, I've seen a lot going on, and I have my own concerns about that process. In particular, application of the code. I hear a lot of talk about the kind of the ends we're trying to achieve, like, we want more density, we want this, we want that. Those are the ends. And what you're really doing as a judge is not deciding what the end is that you're trying to get, especially if we really have not done the comprehensive plan correctly. So we need to go through the process, we need to apply the code. And our city attorney has told residents, you know, you need to write letters based on code. It doesn't matter how many of you show up, and it really doesn't matter how many of you vote, it matters what the code is. And I know we're kind of in a transition point, and it's like, well, it's kind of out of date, and there's a little bit of dismissal of it, and I don't think that's right. We shouldn't have that slippage, because these are huge decisions. We've been making land use decisions on Highway 42, we've been making land use decisions on housing, we have spoken our, our prejudices and our, the views that we want. Even in the Board and Commission, one of the questions was something like, you know, when there's a conflict between our code and what we'd like to do, what innovative things we'd like to do, how would you resolve that? Well, thank goodness, the applicant said, well, you know, you really have to respect the code. But I feel that that sort of is an underlying issue, like the last speaker said, sort of like pushing the envelope. And there's really no way to speak up against that or stand up against that. Once a vote is taken, if that kind of mentality is in place, there's no recourse for the public. I really think that we need to take a systems approach, a code-based approach. We need to look at the big picture, we need to remember our mission, vision, and values. We need to remember that what the people have said. And I also would like to talk about public input. You know, there, residents write hundreds and hundreds of letters, and rarely do I hear from the dais. We had this many letters, like Commissioner Krantz used to do this, she'd say, we had so many letters who talked about this, we had so many letters who talked about this, so many letters of support, so many letters not. I love that, because that brought the people to the dais. Here, it could have been a million letters, it could have been zero. We don't really know. So I think it's your obligation, really, to speak to what has been said and to say, hey, we had 80 letters of opposition to that land use application, or whatever it is, so that people know what's going on. I really appreciate your time, but we need to slow down, we need to obey the process, and that is what saves us from authoritarianism. It really is. That is the biggest challenge to democracy. Authoritarianism thrives on lack of rules. Thank you.
Next is Tiffany Boyd, and on deck is Avani Carter.
Hi, good evening, Tiffany Boyd, 550 Grant Avenue. I'll be quick tonight, I just wanted to let you know there are three students here from Louisville Elementary and Louisville Middle School who want to tell you about their, their project that they're working on that's in alignment with the city's community decarbonization plan. And we have three students here, they're going to tell you about their plans to move forward to decarbonize both of those schools. So I'll yield the rest of my time.
Avani Carter is next, followed by Evan Hyatt.
Hi. My name is Avani, and I go to Louisville Elementary School. And at Louisville Elementary School, there's a club called Panthers for Climate Action. It is part of the Classrooms for Climate Action group. I'm in Panthers for Climate Action, and the reason I'm up here is to tell you about our efforts to decarbonize our schools. If you didn't know, the meaning of decarbonization, it is when you get rid of unnecessary carbon dioxide in the atmosphere. One way that carbon gets into the atmosphere is by burning fossil fuels such as coal. The two ways to decarbonize are using individual actions and community actions. Individual actions are when you or one person buys an electric vehicle or gets an induction stove or something like that, whereas community actions are when the entire community switches over to this, switches over to, to sustainable energy and becomes sustainable. Individual actions are great, but what will really, what will help the most are community actions. At Louisville Elementary School and Louisville Middle School, we are trying to get solar panels onto the roof of our schools. This will cost over a million dollars. I would encourage you to tell people you know about our efforts to try and decarbonize our schools. And remember, even if you think climate change won't affect you for a while, it'll affect your children and grandchildren, so please think of the next generation. Thanks for your time, and I hope you have a good day.
Thank you very much.
Next is Evan Hyatt, followed by Hazel Van Zyl.
Hello, my name is Evan Hyatt, and I am a member of Panthers Pirates for Climate Action at Louisville Middle School and the Louisville Youth Advisory Board. Climate change is a, having a big impact on my and future generations. Louisville Middle School and Louisville Elementary School are advocating to get solar panels on our roofs. And so this is important, because it helps our schools and Louisville reach net zero, and it, it will help with the city's decarbonization plan, because to reach net zero in Louisville, all major buildings, like, including the schools, Louisville Elementary School, Louisville Middle School, and any other schools in Louisville need to be energy efficient. Currently, both schools are run on non-renewables, and we hope that fighting, that getting solar panels will help Louisville decar, decarbonization, vision, strategies, and goals. Thank you.
Thanks, Evan.
Next is Hazel Van Zyl, followed by Tamara Krantz.
Hello, my name is Hazel Van Zyl, and I am a seventh grader at LMS. My group is Pirates for Climate Action at LMS, and we are working to decarbonize LMS and LES, as you've already heard. But the first step that we are taking right now is to get a decarbonization audit and done and create a decarbonization capital investment roadmap, so that we know how much each step of the process will take. But this, like, the whole decarbonization thing won't be easy, and we will need help getting quotes, getting grants. And we've already started on this project, so we have a prediction of our costs at, like, over $1.2 million probably. And we are beginning to plan fundraising and grant writing. Our work is important, because if we want to work towards net zero in all of Louisville, we have to start somewhere, and school buildings are a good place to start. But it will be a lot of work. Thank you for your time and consideration on this matter.
Thank you, Hazel.
Tamara Krantz, and I have no other cards.
Hi, thanks, I'm Tamara, I'm from Louisville. And I have a, a small thing to say, because nothing is as important as decarbonizing our, our city and our schools. But this is just a small procedural thing. The first one was, I really appreciated that Mayor Leh said that he had the time to read all the comments. I noticed hundreds of pages of public comments, and some of them, when I was reading them, included references to codes, references to other things. And if any of you ate dinner, I know this is something that happened with me before, it's okay to say, we need to take a break, I need time to process all of this. I need time to process all of this. So I'm just hoping that you'll leave yourselves time to really read, if you had to eat dinner or something like that, to really read what everybody wrote. I believe there are even more comments that came in after the packet was already addendum was already submitted. And the second really quick thing, I wanted to know if it's possible for you periodically to let us know how many people are participating online. It just gives us an idea of how much interest there is on the agenda items. Thank you.
I don't usually, and we usually don't respond to matters because they're not on the agenda, but that's a request that I can. It looks like there are 44 people on Zoom, and I'll try to do that. That's not a bad suggestion. It's a good suggestion. Excuse me, Tamar.
Mr. Menaker.
Mayor and Council, I'm Michael Menaker. I live at 1827 West Choke Cherry Drive. I've just got a couple of texts from people at home who are trying to watch this on Channel 8 or the digital equivalent on Comcast of 881. And once again, Comcast has let us down. You've got bar graphs of personal income data from some other jurisdiction on Channel 8 at the moment. So for people who are trying to watch, you need to go to YouTube or Zoom. And on YouTube, why, it's incredibly laborious to type in on your remote Louisville City Council. If you do, you'll get there. So if you have an iPad, a computer, or a TV with YouTube app, you're going to be able to get the live broadcast. And I hope that we get this Comcast thing figured out because it's really challenging not to be able to watch at home. Thank you very much. I just wanted you to be aware that people are Comcast has let us down. People are still having problems trying to watch us.
Thank you, Michael. Is there anybody up? All right. Anybody else want to make a comment on a matter not on the agenda or on the consent agenda? I don't see any online. Oh, you may. Just say your name and whether you're from Louisville.
Hi. My name is Laura Page, 920 Rec Street. Just kind of a public announcement that if you have a senior citizen or somebody who's not able to shovel their walk themselves, please be a good neighbor and help out. I was late tonight because there was a woman in her 80s trying to chip ice off of her sidewalk. And I'm going to go back tomorrow and make sure she knows about snow busters, but please be a good neighbor. Thank you.
Thanks.
Mayor, I will say, I've gotten a report that it is working on Comcast for some of our residents. It doesn't appear to be everybody in town who's having a Comcast problem.
That happens sometimes, too. It's too bad it's not uniformly bad, but it's not uniformly good. All right. Anybody else? All right. Yes, please.
Tim Stalker from Louisville. I just have one question. So with when quasi judicial rules...
Hold on for just a second. I'm sorry, you pulled your did you pull your time?
I did, yeah.
Okay.
No.
Can't have you speak again. I'm sorry. Anybody else?
Okay, if somebody else pulls time with me.
Can I allow it? I mean, this is these are the rules that we've got. I'm sorry.
Okay, thanks.
It is one thing to be reminded and not picking on the gentleman who is just up, but don't pull your time if you want to speak. Make sure you hold on to it. All right. So next, City Manager's Report. City Manager.
Mayor, we need to approve the consent agenda.
I always go past the consent agenda. Sorry, council members.
Make a motion to approve the...
Yeah, we have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Do council members have any pertinent items not on the agenda which they would like to report? And council members, stay off the items that are on the agenda. Over.
I'd just like to address the two issues that came up about me. One, I may have failed to do my final financial reports. I was running unopposed and didn't raise any money, so I have to put the zeros on a paper and sign it. But I apparently did not do that in a timely manner, so I'll address that with the city. But as an unopposed candidate, I just didn't do flyers and advertising and things like that. So I just did not need to raise money this year. And then the comments on the sort of, the ex parte communications, all that's been put into the public record. Any emails that I had with a resident are part of the public record during your packet. One email was excluded, which I asked to be added to the record, but it was me to Tim. It said, thank you for responding. I can't have a full conversation here about the plat. It's quasi judicial. Only the GDP issue. It's a closed, passed issue. Thank you for engaging, though. So that was my response to Tim when he was attempting to get more into the details of the plat rather than the 2021 GDP. But I've learned my lesson, and I apologize to my colleagues and the staff that while I enjoy engaging and I sent probably 100 emails that said something like, thank you for your engaging. I appreciate your email. A couple of times, I said something more, which, again, was not prejudgment or an off-the-record conversation, just unnecessary, and I will try to, I will communicate less in that regard. But again, my intention was just to kindly engage with the community and not come to any pre-decisions on any item. But that's all I have to say about those two things. Thanks, Mayor.
Councilmember Hamilton, thank you.
Thank you so much. Unfortunately, the individuals I wanted to speak to have left, but I'm still going to make this comment, so it's on the record tonight. This is in, with respect to Avani, Evan, and Hazel, our youth that showed up to speak about their passion in the public, and I think that's a really brave thing to do. Many adults are scared to come up to that podium and speak to council, and those three individuals were so brave tonight. So I hope that they see how much we appreciate that. Lots of nods up here. So I wanted to say thank you to them.
You're here. Anybody else in council have comments? Okay. Okay. City Managers' Report.
Thank you, Mayor. Nothing tonight.
All right. Okay. Regular business. Okay, we are resuming our hearing concerning Resolution Number 80, Series 2023, a resolution approving the Redtail Ridge filing number one preliminary subdivision plat continued from February 6, 2024. Do we have any disclosures by any member of council?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. As I did at the last meeting on this item, I'm not going to participate in the discussion or decision-making because I have a professional conflict of interest, and I am going to leave the meeting at this time.
Thank you, Councilmember Heffner. We'll wait for you to leave the room. City Attorney.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. As we did have some comments that were made during general public comment before you reopened this public hearing that called into question one of the decision makers. Mayor Protam Dickinson, if you wouldn't mind repeating so that we have it as part of the record of the public hearing, what you said under general council informational comments.
Before you do that, let me open the public, or open the public hearing again. Reopen it.
Yeah, I'll just state that I, there was an accusation that I've had. I think the accusation was of ex parte communications or some predetermination, and the issue in question was email trans back and forth with myself and a resident. And that email transaction is part of the record, and so I didn't have any secret conversation. It's all out there. It's in the packet. Anyone can read it. Although one email, I don't know how to find again. One email was not included in the submittal of the conversation, so I wanted to submit this email for the record in which I wrote, thank you for responding. I can't have a full conversation with the plat because it's quasi judicial. Only the GDP issue because it's passed and a closed issue. Thank you for engaging, though, Caleb. So that I do not feel in any way that my ability to make an impartial decision on this topic has been damaged by that communication or any other communications that I had with any residents that are, again, on my public email. And they're mostly, thank you for your engagement. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor Protam. Before we get going, I do want to make a few comments, a little bit about where we've been, where we are, and where we're going here. Just to kind of refresh everybody's recollection, I hope, in 2010, council, this city council, passed the ConocoPhillips Campus General Development Plan or GDP. It was developed for a concept involving a large energy research campus. Primarily, that development did not materialize. The property has changed hands multiple times. In 2021, an application concerning the Redtail Ridge property sought an amendment to that GDP. That is, ConocoPhillips Campus General Development Plan. The council approved a GDP amendment by a vote of four to three in the fall of 2021. Citizens in Louisville sought to overturn that decision through the referendum process. And in 2022, in an election, Louisville voters overturned the GDP amendment passed the previous year. When the GDP amendment was defeated, neither the city nor the voters nor the applicant started from scratch, however. What was left was the 2010 ConocoPhillips Campus GDP. And that is the governing development plan for the property now, sets forth the land uses and standards that are applicable to the property. And it is why what we're doing tonight and have been doing is not what we were doing back in the fall of 2021, and it was not what we, what the people of Louisville were considering in the spring of 2022 in the referendum election. More recently, council scheduled a hearing of the application on December 5, 2023. If you'll remember, Councilmember Kern and Mayor Protam Dickinson contracted COVID-19, were absent. Councilmember Heffner, of course, had accused himself, from consideration of the items due to a professional conflict of interest, we hadn't yet filled the Ward 1 council member vacancy that was created when I was elected mayor and sworn in on November 28. So we had only three members of our council for the hearing. Under the circumstances, we voted at that time to extend or reschedule the hearing, and we did so on February 4, February 6 at 6:00 p.m. We did that so that we would have a seven, hopefully, six, a seven-member council, six of whom would be here to begin the public hearing on the application. And that is, in fact, what we did because we, in the meantime, as a council, appointed Tim Bierman to the Ward 1 spot, and his very first night was the very first night that began the hearing on the current resolution. At that hearing, as you'll remember, council first heard a presentation by Director of Community Development, Rob Zuccaro. After the staff presentation by Mr. Zuccaro, we heard a presentation by the applicant. And after that, council moved to and agreed to continue the public hearing on the application for preliminary plating, Resolution Number 80, Series 2023, until tonight at 6:00 p.m. All right, that's where we've been. Where we are tonight is that we are continuing the public hearing. We've gotten into it a bit already, of course. Mr. Zuccaro was requested at the first part of the hearing to provide some additional information, including the grading plan, and he's going to be shortly providing a little bit of information on that and some other things. And we'll complete that staff presentation. I believe he's also going to play the drone footage that was a part of the packet both last time and this time, or at least incorporated into the packet. After Mr. Zuccaro completes his presentation, council members will have an opportunity to ask clarifying questions of city staff and the applicant. We will then receive public comment. I'll discuss that a little more when we get to that point. After we receive public comments, council have an opportunity to ask further clarifying questions to staff or the applicant, to discuss the application, the criteria by which we're to judge the application, and the evidence that is before the council, and whether the evidence before us is sufficient or not enough to prove the application. We will then decide whether to either approve or disapprove the application or to return the application to the Louisville Planning Commission for further review and recommendations. Where we ultimately will be eventually, and I'm not sure exactly when that will be yet. Can't say for sure. Depends on a whole bunch of things. But ultimately, council will have to decide whether to approve the application for preliminary plating with or without conditions, deny the application, or send it back to the LPC, as we said, or as I said. If denied, the applicant could file a new go application to try to obtain approval of preliminary plat and other approvals that it needs for mandate of the Planning Commission. We would provide some comments concerning that. If it's approved, whether by council in this hearing or after remand, then the application would turn to us for final plating, and at that time, the city would review the, both the final plat application and concurrently, a request for an amendment to the Redtail Ridge Metro District Service Plan. But we are getting ahead of ourselves. Tonight, I think it is time for the remainder of the staff presentation.
Good evening. Mayor Lay, members of city council, Rob Zuccaro, Community Development Director for the city. I'm just going to make a couple of comments about the additional information that was included in the staff report, and then I am going to play the video. I did include some additional information and wanted to provide some clarification. One was noting that the original, you know, the packet from two weeks ago did include a drainage plan, which is what's required. The drainage report, which we added for this packet, has some additional information. The drainage plan also has existing and proposed topography for the development. So I just wanted to make sure everybody understood. There's lots of lines on that plan. It's really hard to read. You have to spend a lot of time kind of interpreting it, but the information is there. There were some questions raised about preliminary plats needing to have building heights and allowed uses. There is information in the application about what the allowed uses are. There is information in the application about what the allowed uses are, what the building heights are. I laid that all out. It's not written on the preliminary plat, but there's, all the regulations are within the packet. And then I added some supplemental information about existing utilities and natural features that weren't in the previous packet, but thought it would add some substance to some of the relevant criteria. So I added an ALTA survey and then the wildlife use assessment that was provided by, was provided for this property under previous applications. So we have it in our file. It had some high-resolution aerials and substantive information. So we thought that could be relevant to your proceedings. So with that, unless there's any questions, I would be happy to play the video. If we could switch to click share up on the screen here, and then I can play it. It's about 4 minutes and 22 seconds.
Could you explain, just before we get into this, who made it, when, what the circumstances are here?
Right, the applicant provided the video, and I defer to them on the details of the video. I think it was different footage taken over different periods of time and then put together into a single video.
Could the applicant or somebody for the applicant just provide that information, if it's available, as to who took it, what the circumstances were? Just so that everybody knows what that is.
Hi, Sarah Compa with Tribe Architects, part of the applicant team. Yeah, this video was created, it's a combination of still footage and drone footage onsite and around the surrounding area. So it, it's also narrated with text on the screen, so should be self-explanatory, but happy to answer questions about it.
Thank you.
So that's the reason why the 2010 ConocoPhillips Campus General Development Plan has the language it has, which has some language about anticipated heights, but references to the PUD. Only through a PUD can you change building heights. There was a, with the Conoco campus, PUD, preliminary PUD, there was a concept of clustering. Again, that's an expired plan. It's not relevant to this application. Comprehensive plan has language about clustering, the current comprehensive plan. And it says that potentially you can go higher if you cluster buildings and those types of things. The way, the appropriate time for those conversations is through a planned unit development PUD application, the way our code is set up. The subdivision plat's purpose is to create lots, streets, infrastructure for development under the relevant zoning, but it can't change the zoning. So those discussions have to take place through those other application types. And the zoning is set by the 2010 GDP.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, Mayor Protam.
Yeah, just clarification that we've gotten a lot of emails that are encouraging housing and things like that, and just want to be clear. Like, I, I understand the GDP does not allow for any housing, and I understand that there's no housing being discussed. But is there a process post the plat where housing could be introduced? That's good or bad? I'm just wondering, it's not good or bad. I'm not giving a value on that. But is housing an impossibility as we move forward from where we are with no housing currently on the, on the, in the plan? Or is there a point in the process, like in the PUD process or otherwise, where housing could come back to the plan?
Right, so to be clear, this application can't change uses. The uses are set by the GDP, so it's not relevant to the consideration of the merits of this application. If there, if the process for allowing housing would be a general development plan amendment, there could also be policy change through our comprehensive plan process that would set a policy as well for housing on any property, whether it was this one or any one. And then you'd have to change the zoning to align with the comprehensive plan.
Okay, so housing's not a part of this moment. I hear that. And then if you could just give us again, because I'm, I'm learning this too, and I got, I feel like some pretty good information, but not everyone's been at every one of these meetings. So, so we have a preliminary plat and a final plat. And so we're doing some things now, and if this were to pass, we'd come back and we'd be back here for a final plat. Can you help us just with some of the differences between, the key differences between the preliminary and the final? Again, I think it's important for people's public comments, too. I think there's a lot of questions about this. So if we understand what it is we're supposed to be doing here and what is meant to be dealt with at the next stage.
Right, so the preliminary plat and the final plat should substantially match in the lot layout, the blocks, the street network, the utilities. The difference is, is that the applicant will be required to develop final construction documents or near-final construction documents. They'll have to have a subdivision improvement agreement that will outline the cost, and they'll, they'll have, there'll be terms to that agreement where they have to build it and warranty the infrastructure. There will be provisions for this application. There'll be specific provisions for a transportation demand management plan. Any of their commitments that they're making, we would put in that subdivision improvement agreement, make sure there was a way to enforce their commitments. So they do have sustainability commitments that they're proposing. For example, the Metro District Service Plan would be a concurrent but separate application. But the way we set up the current service plan is that they have to come back for a final plat and update their public infrastructure costs and some things like that. We'll have a final drainage report, final traffic report. You know, all of those things will come back. There's probably going to be easement vacations as well. There's a lot of old easements, so you'll be taking action on those easement vacations as well, potentially.
Appreciate it. I think that's all I have for now.
I have another layer I want to add to that. So if a preliminary is approved, can any construction begin? Period. No. Sorry, I felt like I had more, so I was kind of hanging. Question mark. Thank you for the punctuation correction.
Normally, no. So normally, when a preliminary plat is approved, you can't start building public infrastructure. There is the, there is an agreement that runs with this land, as I understand it, that there is a potential that the applicant could start site grading, which was an agreement that was made with ConocoPhillips in the zoning agreement that's included in the packet that potentially could allow them to start site grading, moving dirt, but they can't start installing any infrastructure until the final plat.
Could that be made a condition in the approval? That that does not start until final, or no?
Be grading. So I think if it's relevant to any of the particular conditions, potentially, but that's an agreement that's recorded and runs with the land, and this is just a preliminary approval. So I think technically you couldn't change that agreement. So.
But like if a road hasn't been finalized or something like that, that could affect grading or placement of drainage and stuff?
Right, yeah, certainly, that would be at their risk. If they start moving dirt and they do it in a way that doesn't conform to the final plan, then that's their risk. They would have to come back and change that grading to conform to the final plan ultimately, if they chose to do it.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions, my counsel for applicant? Yes, please. Councilwoman Bierman?
This is regarding traffic impact. So I've, I've seen the study. Just trying to get clarity on that 21,285 number, Rob. Is that average daily trips? That's additional average trips? And I'd like to know relative to what we're looking at today, you know, what does that mean? Because that's an absolute number right now. So I'd love to just get some clarity, whether from the applicant or from you.
Right, so that's daily trips distributed through the whole day. So the traffic study has a table, and that's a full build-out.
Right.
So it does have a table that shows peak hour traffic in addition to that total daily traffic. I think the important thing to remember is, right now, there's no traffic. It's a vacant site, so there's no traffic. So this would add traffic to the network. It gets distributed, and so there's some distribution assumptions. So I think it's important to know that all 21,000 aren't on a single road at any single time. They get distributed over the day into the entire road network. Just as an example, to kind of contextualize it, the Colorado Tech Center is a much bigger development than this is anticipated to be. Think about the traffic around the Colorado Tech Center. You know, that's probably close to double the amount of square footage as, as anticipated in this development to, to give a concept of the type of traffic. I think in the last packet, we actually provided just, for example, some, like the amount of traffic on surrounding roadway networks that exist today. You know, on 96th Street north of Dillon Road, total daily traffic is about 18,000 currently, based on the most recent traffic counts. So that's getting close to 21, just as an example. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I'm just trying to get that number, put it to perspective in it. And I know the flow of 75% is going to be through major arteries, so I understand that. I'm just trying to get a sense of, and there is traffic today on that road, right? It's not attributable to that space, but there is, you know.
There's, there's traffic, there's traffic today in background. So between now and 2040, which is when that total build-out is anticipated, there would be additional background traffic from surrounding development as well that would contribute. And then, of, you know, there would be road improvements made by this development and other road improvements that we would anticipate being made in the future to add capacity to the road networks.
Thanks.
Councilwoman Kern?
Thank you. So sort of building on the traffic study component of this, so I just want to make sure I'm understanding this. There was or was not a traffic study done related to the amount of traffic that currently flows to Avista?
So there was not a traffic study for Avista. I think Avista is probably part of the background traffic assumptions, and that you can see the Avista traffic in the current network counts. But Avista, you know, there weren't, there was no anticipation of additional traffic coming from Avista, if that makes sense.
Okay. Did the conversation come up about the change of the traffic pattern from Avista, where a lot of that traffic is currently coming down? Maybe it was, maybe it was 50/50, but some of it's coming down like Dillon, west on Dillon to 88th, but some of it's coming east on Dillon. So that traffic would get diverted then, and you'd have heavier traffic heading eastbound on Dillon, like as if now, instead of going to the hospital, you have to go past it and go down to 96 and turn, that kind of thing. And as well as anybody who needs to use the hospital.
Yeah, I'm going to have the applicant's traffic engineer start to weigh in on this. Thanks.
Great question. Thank you for that question. I'm Cassie Slade, and I'm with Boxtunnel and doing the traffic study on this. So there wasn't a specific, let's count every single vehicle from the hospital today. However, our traffic counts were taken at 88th and campus. So we did get the peak periods of what the hospital is generating today. And what we did in the traffic study, we, we had a different, a bunch of different things and said, in the background, Avista stays where it's at. With project, it gets moved, and so all of that traffic gets moved from 88th and Dillon and moves over to the new site. So we took what those peak periods are, which is what we do evaluate in traffic studies. We took that, followed the patterns through the entire network, and said, okay, if these folks are coming from, you know, east on Northwest Parkway or west over by McCaslin, folks are coming from, you know, east on Northwest Parkway or west over by McCaslin, how now are they getting, what's the fastest path for them to get to the new site? So we did take that into account to make sure that we are accounting for how trips are being removed from the residential streets to the regional streets. And just to make kind of a note, if this helps at all, based on national data, hospitals typically, this hospital would typically have about 3,000 trips a day, and that's of the 21,000 trips you guys have seen in the numbers. And that, that is included inside of that, if that makes sense.
This is good. Thank you. I'm glad that you did give that consideration. Did you also then, when you were looking at that, give consideration to all the residents who are on the west side of town? So like McCaslin, like all the way up to South Boulder Road?
Yes.
The typical, I think, the fastest route currently is McCaslin, Dillon, 88th.
Yep.
So changing that route to down Dillon, which currently is two lanes, and then right on 96th adds probably a good four minutes' drive to everybody who lives up there. So it's a worry. So I like that you addressed this. Did you guys come up with a better solution for emergency vehicles or people in an emergency, how to faster get to the new location of the hospital?
That's, that's a great question. We, the traffic study doesn't specifically look at emergency vehicles. One of the reviewers is the fire department. They then look at what is being proposed and how that enhances their response to incidents and response to getting people to and from the hospital and from there. We have been, we've built in Campus Drive, which then reduces traffic off of Dillon and which also then reduces traffic off of one-way on Campus Drive per the time of day, right? And so that then does help reduce all of those incident management or incident time, response times in general, because the connectivity and the mobility is increased.
Did you look at alternate routes other than Dillon to 96th, instead of making that big corner for everybody on the west side of town? Give, I, I will let, full disclosure, I represent a lot of the people who live on the west side of town, so.
Fair, fair. We, we, what we did is we used what's existing today and existing patterns and looked into the future of how those roads fill up. And if those roads fill up, what's the next road to fill up, right? And so that's how we have adjusted the traffic with the new roads that are going to be put in and the new connectivity that's going to happen with Redtail, and then as well as without Redtail. If that didn't come in, how much fuller would those roads get until they just can't handle anymore? So we did look at all of that in our study.
If it was a recommendation of the fire department for EMS purposes, or even the recommendation of, for residents needing to commute to the hospital in an emergency?
Yeah.
That either there was an emergency lane specifically for access like that on Dillon, or perhaps campus, or what is currently the old disk drive, that would give a more direct route to that new emergency services, instead of adding four minutes, potentially only adding two minutes to somebody's drive?
Yes. Sorry, can you repeat the question on that one?
Yeah. Is, had, had any ideas or conversation, or would you entertain if the fire department proposed a emergency lane, something that would facilitate, reduce the travel time for the people on the west side of town specifically?
Yeah.
To get to that hospital? So instead of adding like four minutes to a drive?
Yeah.
They would add two minutes to the drive by either paralleling campus, doing something along tape drive, adding an emergency access. The people could drive, like emergency vehicles could drive faster on Dillon just to get to a hospital in case of that.
Right.
I didn't know if that would be something you would consider.
We did not to date consider that, and we haven't been requested that. Obviously, if the conversation come up, we would discuss that with our team and with the city.
I bring it up as my fellow councilmember brought up the roads and the grading, and I, I want to get ahead of this, instead of saying, ooh, we, we probably should have planned for a third of our community having a much longer drive to their emergency room. I would love to have kind of thought through it in advance and see if we can't work together to come up with a faster route and involve the fire department if necessary. Maybe it's the best route.
Fair. Okay.
Good. Thank you.
And I'll just add to that. I think as, and we have a representative from Avista Hospital here as well that can speak to this, but you know, Avista has expressed the need to expand, and they are site constrained in their current location. And so I think the, you know, being able to move to Redtail to continue to serve Lewisville in a relative close proximity is their goal, to do that.
Right. Thank you.
Did you want to hear from the person from Avista in response to your question? Okay. Councilmember Hamley?
Thank you. I have two more clarifying questions for the staff. The first, I think, is a yes/no. Is the BVSD agreement expired for the Campus Drive extension?
I don't know. I'd have to look and see if it has an expiration on it.
Okay. Can we get clarification on that, please?
If, if I could add to that, though, we, we've had a couple of resolutions from them because this has taken so long. We haven't had any indicate, they do get referrals on this. We haven't had an indication that they're not supportive of this project anymore, even though their board might have to pass a new resolution. Plus, this is preliminary. We would have to have a final approval from them at final plat. And the reason we've moved the application forward, there's several preliminary approvals or outstanding items, and that's normal with the preliminary plat, to have outstanding approvals.
So that wouldn't need to be a condition, for example, because it's needed to?
I don't think it has to be a condition. It would, the final plat absolutely will be required to have that. They, they will actually have to deed right-of-way to the city for this to happen. That'll all have to be in its final, complete form with the final plat.
Okay. Thank you. And then my second question is, there are a couple plots of land that are outside of Lewisville, that are part of the, I'll call it public land dedication, the Paradise Lane and then the Broomfield on the south. Have there been any conversations about annexation of those? Or in, or if yes, what did it look like? And if no, are there any benefits to having those conversations or not?
So there's an IGA with Boulder County related to the Paradise Lane properties that would allow annexation if the city wanted to annex the properties. We haven't had discussions with Boulder County about annexing. Our discussions have been about how to structure the dedication, ownership, IGAs, conservation easements that would be needed. But there hasn't been contemplation that the city would annex those properties as part of the public land dedication proposal.
Okay. Thank you.
I had just a couple of questions. In the report, staff report on the 6th, and this is just part of your staff recommendation, that there are two conditions, not, you know, a bunch of conditions, and I presume these are the only ones that you believe that need to be made for the, for the application to pass muster under the rules. But the first one is that prior to the city council hearing on the final plat, the applicant shall provide approval from the Northwest Parkway Authority for the Campus Drive, excuse me, for the Campus Drive alignment, or provide an alternative alignment with any necessary approvals for such alignment. Now, that was as of the 6th of February. Has there been any further development between the 6th and the 20th today on anything that Northwest Parkway Authority is saying about approval or non-approval?
The city staff has not received any further information on that.
Okay. I don't know whether the applicant has any more information, but that would be good to know.
Good evening. Evan Peston, I'm with Sterling Bay, the developer. So I've, over the last several months, we've had multiple discussions with, with the Northwest Parkway, and of those discussions, we've agreed to terms of some of the asks they've had. So after our meeting on the 6th, we submitted an IGA to them. So prior to final plat approval, there will be an IGA for all those agreed-upon terms that we, that we had with them. So it will, it will be before you before and finalized, before the final plat.
Has that been, I mean, I, you've submitted it, and that's all well and good. I, I don't know whether things go to the Northwest Parkway Authority and actually get acted on, or just go into a vortex. Do you have some indication from the authority that they're in process for doing just what you're saying?
Yeah, in process of reviewing and getting us comments back. So we'll have a, a call here shortly, and we'll iron out any final details and then get that IGA finalized.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that addition. And the last thing, this may have been what you were talking about, Director Sakaro, the second condition is, prior to the city council hearing on the final plat, the applicant shall address all outstanding public works comments on the traffic and mobility study. I, I guess, I don't know, maybe that's, have any of those been addressed up to now?
So no, there are some outstanding technical comments. I think we were comfortable, working with the public works staff, that it, the report was in a place, that it was supportable for a preliminary approval. There's technical things that need to be addressed. They haven't been addressed because we're waiting to get the outcome of the preliminary plat.
Of course.
And then, and then they would move forward with making a resubmital to address comments.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure. If there were, you know, sometimes people are trying to keep moving even as the council moves slowly. All right. Other comments that anybody from council has? If not, we can go to time for public comments. I'll give you one last time, council. Okay. We, we can ask, you know, you have the prerogative of asking questions, more clarifying questions in the council discussion and decision later on. But I appreciate the useful, insightful questions that you all have, have prepared. And I know that there are some that the public will certainly have as well. As I had mentioned before, I kind of wanted to take another moment to talk a little bit about public comment on this part of the, of the process. And, you know, with the proviso that, again, people have three or six minutes to speak, as we've discussed, but I, I wanted to say a little bit about what is and isn't at issue in the hearing. This isn't a hearing about the referendum election. It's not about the GDP amendment from 2021. Those are all disposed of at this point, not disposed of, but the, the GDP amendment from '21 is gone. Poof. And the guiding, the guiding GDP document is the one we talked about before, which is the ConocoPhillips GDP. We're not here to amend the GDP. We're not here to create a new one. We're operating within the structure of land use rules that we've passed, or I should say predecessors of us, our council passed, back in 2010, and other rules that are in place for the, the decisions we're going to have to make. That's not my opinion. That's not the council's opinion. That's the reality. And it's a reality for the applicant. It's a reality for the staff, the city council, the public, and for each of you. We're about to begin that, that portion of the quasi-judicial hearing in which we hear public comment, and it's a very important part of what we're doing. It's a very important part of the democratic process and input to the decision that we're going to have to make. And we value the insights and the analyses that we've already gotten, as well as the ones we're about to receive. And I want to thank you in advance for those. Thanks for all of you hanging in there with us on that, and for speaking in a hopefully organized and ordered way. I think we've talked enough about the quasi-judicial process. It's mostly. I think that it is, it is odd to think of us up here as judges, and because what we do most of the time is act in a legislative capacity. Our charter sets up the, us as the legislative body that passes ordinances, appeals ordinances, passes resolutions and so forth. It sets the executive as the city staff, led by our city manager. We have a municipal judge, but the municipal judge has a fairly limited panoply of things that he does, does very well, in terms of applying our ordinances to violations, traffic violations, nuisance allegations and so forth. Where, where we come in on this is that in some matters that we're affecting private property rights, we have to have a process to apply our rules, which we set out in advance of the process that people are going through, this applicant is going through. We don't change the rules in the middle. We have rules. They bring an application. They come to us to apply them. And that's why this sort of formality, and it's, it may seem like a stiff and maybe cumbersome formality that we're going through, but it's not. It's important because it protects the community and the, the rules that we have for how land is to be used in our community. And it protects the applicant whose property is, is at issue. We can't prejudge things as council. We have to pay attention to what we've received so far and the information we're going to get. And this is the opportunity for you to, to provide still additional information, opinions, agreements, disagreements, posing questions, which some of you have already done through your emails. And we want as many of you as possible to be able to speak if you want to. You get to have one round of public comment. That's what we're doing. And that means, this kind of a example before, one time to, to speak, and you get the three minutes, as we've discussed before. I won't go back over that. I don't want to do anything to discourage everybody from speaking. I think the same rules that I mentioned before about not having, you know, you don't have to use the full amount of time. You can quote somebody else, and just, that's fine. That helps. We're not necessarily looking for the most number of comments on a particular item. This is not a, you know, a battle of how many comments on a particular item. It doesn't, it's not going to make the, the, the difference between whether something, whether it passes or not. What can be very helpful is, if you're for or against this, you certainly say that, but if you can provide information and opinion and analysis that meets or talks about some of the criteria that we have to deal with, which Director Sakaro talked about, that will help us in terms of the decision that we, that we ultimately have to make and the criteria that we have to apply constitutionally to the decision at hand. So do we have our first?
Yes, I will say we have 57 people online watching the meeting. If you're online and want to speak, please use the raise hand button, and we'll get to you in due course. The first person to speak is Stephanie Schlagader, and on deck is Iona Kearney.
I have a question. How much traffic, more traffic is there going to be in this project?
Ma'am, you have to wait your turn.
I have to wait my turn.
You do. Have you signed up for public comment?
I have.
Okay. She'll call your name.
Oh, is that right?
Yeah.
I just have a question as far as traffic is concerned.
You'll be able to ask the question when she calls her name. Thanks.
Hi, good evening. My name is Stephanie Schlagader, and I am representing myself as a business owner. I'm also on the Downtown Business Association. I'm also on the Downtown Business Association Board, as well as the Louisville Chamber of Commerce Board. And I just wanted to express that I am in favor of the Redtail Ridge plans for the redevelopment of the former Storage Tech site. As a business owner in Louisville and a representative of the organizations I mentioned and a nearby resident, I see this as nothing but a clear plus. Right now, the site is an abandoned wasteland that nobody can really use and an eyesore to those who have to live or pass by it. Redeveloping the land will mean access to open space for area residents. It will add jobs, it will add housing, all of which are needed to sustain and grow the health and prosperity of our community. And if pursuing the project just for the upside isn't reason enough, we should do it to protect and preserve our community by ensuring, among other things, that Avista Hospital and its services and employees are not lost to another community. We all must acknowledge as a community that if we are not evolving and growing, then we are dying, and I think it's really important that we make this move to keep the community growing. Just wanted to let you know, I strongly support this redevelopment, and I think it would be a huge mistake not to allow the project to move forward. It is long overdue and our community really needs this. Thank you.
Thank you. If when you come up, make sure to say your name and whether you're, where you reside too. I forgot to emphasize that.
Next is Iona Kearney, I believe, and on deck will be Catherine Smith.
Perfect. Honorable Mayor, City Council Members and City Staff, my name is Iona Kearney, and I represent the Louisville Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors as their president at 901 Main Street in Louisville. On behalf of the Board of Directors of Louisville Chamber of Commerce and the 350-plus businesses that we represent, we are asking the council to support the preliminary plat for the proposed Redtail Ridge project. The project includes many innovative measures to promote mobility and mass transit ridership, and includes more than 19 miles of new trails, multi-use paths and bike lanes. The site is located less than half a mile from an RTD location and is well placed to become a model of both transit-oriented development and become, and implement sensible first and last mile transit solutions. Additionally, the future relocation and upgrades to Avista Hospital to this development is critical to the future success of our city and would have a substantial positive impact on the future of Louisville, being that the hospital is one of the largest employers in our region. This will have a significant impact on our city's businesses and residents. We believe it is a missed opportunity for Louisville not to have a seat on the Northwest Parkway. I encourage the council to work with the Northwest Parkway to protect Louisville's interests and support the Life Sciences Campus at Redtail Ridge, and it would be nice to see one of our council members on that board to represent our city. Regarding sustainability, the project will pursue both LEED and FITWELL certification and has made several dozen commitments for energy efficiency, onsite renewable energy, EV chargers, native plant pallets, water-wise landscaping fixtures, and so much more. Habitat management and preservation are also key elements of this next-generation Life Sciences Campus and collectively represent an enormous improvement on the current conditions there. And of course, the Redtail Plan creates more than 139 acres of new public lands for our community to use with the 19 miles of new trails and bike paths, and will include numerous multimobility features. It would be great if we were to hold all future developments to such a high bar that Redtail Ridge will set. In summary, we request that you approve the preliminary plat for the Redtail Ridge as presented to council. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Catherine Smith, followed by Dorothy Kane.
Hi, I'm Catherine Smith. I'm a Louisville resident in Ward Three. I wanted to talk a little bit about open space, why we have it, what it does for our community, and just to say briefly that it provides a respite for humans, it provides habitat for wildlife, it provides us with ecosystem services, and it provides us with remarkable beauty. And I would like to reflect a little bit on the process that the city has for evaluating this type of application. And note for you that I don't see that anyone in the city is tasked with actually evaluating the factors that are set forth in our city code related to whether or not additional open space is needed. Section 161010 sets out factors, the city's comprehensive plan, which has many references to open space and what it adds to our city, topography, drainage, vegetation and other physical conditions, the availability of other open space. And I would note that when you're evaluating that criteria, that our existing open space, which would be, I think, sort of comparable to what we're talking about here, is Davidson Mesa. And I was there just yesterday. I got the last parking spot at around 3:30. And I would say that the amount of use that that space gets suggests to me that in 10 years, 20 years, 30 years, if we're not thinking in that timeframe, we are not going to have enough open space for our community. The overall need within the proposed areas and park and recreation areas. In contrast to some people's views, I sent in a letter from a grasslands ecologist, Steve Jones. I hope you've all had a chance to read that. It presents a really different view of what is there and what is worth preserving, and I just want to put forward the idea that we need to explore that more and that you, as members of the council, should be asking the staff to do an evaluation. I think the record is really incomplete. We don't understand what the impact of this proposed development is from an open space perspective, and that concerns me a great deal. Finally, with regard to traffic, I feel that until we have a plan that really addresses the levels of service, we are, I see my time is up. Thank you very much, and make the right decision.
Thanks, Catherine.
Next is Dorothy, I believe, Kane, and on deck is Eric Reed.
The only, the only thing that I'm concerned about is 21,000 extra trips and the pollution it creates. My son lives in Denver and there's pollution, and it's because of cars. And with 21,000 extra trips, my concern is pollution. That's all.
Thank you.
Eric Reed, and on deck is, we're going to go to Zoom, and the name is USGBC Mountain.
My name is Eric Reed. I am a Louisville resident, owner of Acme Fine Goods here in Old Town Louisville. I sit on the DBA Board as the retail liaison, and I am the vice president of the Chamber of Commerce. I'll be reading a letter from the DBA here in Louisville, and I will, if I have time, speak as a resident, a parent and a business owner. Louisville councilors and staff, I want to say thank you for all the hard work that everyone has done, and welcome to the city council. Councilman Bierman. On behalf of the Downtown Business Association of Louisville, the public comment is provided to express our strong support for the adoption of Resolution 80 Series 2023 concerning Redtail Ridge for the reasons stated in the positive comments in the staff report and the application materials. It is essential for the future of Louisville and its community that Avista Hospital remain in the city, that the campus drive link from Monarch be completed, and that additional open space, park, trail and other amenities become available to our residents. High-quality improvements to the currently underutilized and deteriorated site, shown on pages 36 and 41 of the applicant's materials, please reference, will be a great benefit to our community. With much of the site actually open for entry and use by our residents, approving the Redtail Ridge plat will result in the largest non-Gulf public dedication in Louisville history. It's important to recognize. Redtail Ridge is an infill project surrounded by Louisville, Broomfield and Superior. Work on that site would transform the current mess into a source of innovation for the future and customers for our businesses. Given its location away from most current residents in our, our opinion, there will be few, if any, significant negative impacts. The plan under consideration Resolution 80 Series 2023 represents a significant improvement over the plan previously submitted to the voters in terms of energy production, use, lighting, use of transit, and improvements to the Northwest Parkway, trails and use of land, among others. Owners have listened and responded. Therefore, the DBA urges a yes vote on Resolution 80 Series 2023. Signed off, DBA of Louisville. And since I have 28 seconds left, I just want to say, optimist I am. I hope that the city can move forward with some movement to bring more to the town. There's been a lot of kind of disagreement for years, and I'm looking forward to seeing us grow, not be preserved in a jar. It's very important. Thank you.
Thanks, Eric.
So, on Zoom, the caller is listed as USGBC Mountain.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, and on deck is Don Parcher.
Perfect. Thank you, Mayor, Council and Staff for tonight's public hearing on this development proposal. My name is Charlie Woodruff. Currently reside Boise, Idaho. However, I do have roots from Louisville. Grew up in Louisville. In fact, my childhood home was burnt in a Marshall fire. So, thank you again for allowing me to speak tonight. The US Green Building Council, USGBC, strongly supports Redtail Ridge's intent to pursue LEED certification on this development. This development aims to be a leader in sustainability with building types including life science, GMP, industrial, research and development, office and retail. USGBC is a nonprofit organization committed to transforming the way all buildings and communities are designed, built and operated to support a sustainable, resilient and prosperous environment that improves the quality of life for all. Our flagship green building system, Leadership in Energy and Environmental Design, LEED, is a nationally recognized standard that takes a holistic view to whole building performance. LEED certified projects must meet a set of rigorous criteria within prerequisites and flexible credits that, when combined, set building projects on the path to excellence. LEED takes a holistic approach to building performance, considering factors such as energy and water efficiency, occupant comfort, indoor air quality, disaster resilience, waste, biodiversity and building materials. Through lower operating costs and better performance, these buildings support a myriad of public policy goals that align with the city of Louisville's resilience and sustainability goals. That includes decarbonization, community resilience, public health and economic and workforce development. We look forward to supporting this important work and redevelopment of an existing brownfield site. Redtail Ridge intends to pursue LEED Silver Level Certification for all the buildings using the guidance for Core and Shell developments. We're extremely excited to see this development move forward and look forward to supporting anyone involved with technical assistance. Thanks very much for your time.
Thank you.
Next is Don Parcher, and on deck is Adrian Middleton.
Good evening, Don Parcher, 378 Grau School. As I mentioned when I asked you to support Josh Cooperman for the vacant city council seat, I hate to say it, but I think that because of what we have done to the climate, we have probably passed the point of no return for saving life on earth. And please keep in mind the comments you heard from the students earlier this evening. I believe our only hope is to make climate action top of mind in the things we do. Regarding the Redtail Ridge proposal, that means no use of fossil, fossil fuels, a lot more open space, minimize scraping of land and minimize gas-powered vehicle trips, perhaps by including affordable housing. Please do the right thing and do whatever you can to make Louisville carbon neutral or negative and make Louisville a model for other communities around the world. It's far more important to be climate friendly than business friendly. Thank you.
Thanks, Don.
Next is Adrian Middleton, followed by Rick and Ruda.
Hi, my name's Adrian Middleton. I live in Ward Two of Louisville. I want to say that in the special referendum, voters turned down this development's footprint, and I can't believe that the city council is entertaining the same footprint for it now. We've all heard Mayor Lay and other council members say how much they support the democratic process, and I think it's time to prove it. I understand that the developer is proposing fewer square feet of built-out space than previously, which I support, but they still want to grade the entire Storage Tech site. That land has a lot of valuable ecological stuff, and I think grading the whole thing is a bad idea. I support the idea of open space north of Disk Drive, and I think that adding 20,000 cars to city of Louisville is a terrible ecological disaster. I ran the global climate change models for 30 years, we're failing to reduce carbon emissions fast enough, and this development is only going to make things worse. Louisville voters have voted time and again to support open space, and if we don't stand up for open space north of Disk Drive now, there won't be any red tails on, quote, Redtail Ridge. We need that open space for our sanity, for our ecology and our future. So, please vote against this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Rick and Ruda, and on deck is Stephanie Rowe.
Hey, my name is Richard Retichuk. I will be a Louisville resident again as soon as they finish building our home. I'm actually for the Redtail Ridge. I think one of the things that I haven't really heard much about is anyone mention the amount of revenue Redtail Ridge will provide to the city. I kind of look at it from this perspective as the fact that this revenue can be used to improve our open space, deal with carbon offsets in various places by allowing us to plant trees and improve our open space. That's just the one comment. The other comment is, is dealing with the previous debacles we've had with the Redtail Ridge, one of the things that I found very informative was previously they had a presentation presented by the developer at the Louisville Rec Center. I would just like to see if that would be something they would be looking to entertain so that they can educate the people of Louisville as to how are they going to improve the land, deal with the carbon offsets, try to determine what's going to be lost as far as land and what they can do to improve that land to make it more environmentally friendly to the environment. That's it. Thank you very much. I'm going to go watch the hockey game now.
Thank you.
Next is Stephanie Rowe, and on deck is Greg Maring.
Hi there, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you. Stephanie Rowe, I'm a resident of Louisville, and I'm just, I guess I'm just really, find it really appalling that all of this discussion about this property, the language that everybody is saying suggests that it is an empty barren wasteland devoid of life. And I think that that is, at best, disrespectful and at worst, incredibly dangerous. I mean, I guess go ahead and, and give the okay to obliterate all life on to obliterate all life on this property, if you must, but let's be conscious about what we're doing there. This property is not lifeless. There are thousands of thousands of animals that have been living there undisturbed for decades and in portions of the property for, you know, going back to who knows how long. There's an estimated 5,000 to 10,000 prairie dogs living there, most of whom will be either poisoned or plowed under during the development process and the grading process. There are thousands of songbirds and raptors. There are snakes. There are raccoons. There are deer. There are bobcats. The list goes on and on. So I just think that when we talk about this place, we need to remember that we're talking about creatures that are living their lives there and that the decision to grade and pave and build is also a decision to kill and displace. So I'm hoping that we can sort of center that a little bit more and honor what's at stake here. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie.
Greg Maring, Louisville Ward Three resident. First of all, I just, with all the disinformation kind of swirling around this project, I want to thank Directors Akaro for really distilling all the facts so that residents can really see the truth about what's going on. Certainly, a lot of my colleagues have commented on a lot of the benefits with Avista, the Campus Drive extension and safety to our Monarch families, the huge dedication of open space. I want to thank the developer for really listening and adding a lot of additional concessions since the last iteration, which really kind of sickened me is just, I've read through a lot of letters, and it seems like people are advocating for expropriating private land in our community. And I mean, I think that's a dangerous precedent for any business owner or landowner in the community. And really, this level of extortion to this developer. I used to live in Venezuela, and those kind of things didn't surprise me there, but I never thought I'd see something like that here in America, yet alone Louisville, which used to be hailed as the best small town in America. It's really disheartening. We've seen a huge erosion in our business climate over the last few years from unfunded mandates, increases in taxes, new untenable laws, some really diatribes from people that used to sit in your seats there, and we heard from earlier tonight. And really, the actions from a few in this room that have just really caused a decline in the business community here. So I know it, this personal investor that used to be involved in a business owner here in town, it really killed my entrepreneurial spirit. And, you know, I'm done, but I want to continue to advocate for those that need to do business here in town. We need a fair set of rules and a fair set of ways so that businesses can know what they need to do. I'm hoping, at the end of the night, council puts the "Open for Business" sign back up here in Louisville. Really, the needs of the many outweigh the complaints of a few. Thank you.
Thanks, Greg.
Next is Jonathan Singer, and on deck is Tamar Krantz.
Good evening, members of council. I'm Jonathan Singer, 2440 Pearl Street in Boulder. If people think of that as my home, I do live under my desk at the Boulder Chamber. But more importantly, I'm not here actually representing just the Boulder Chamber, but the Northwest Chamber Alliance. The Northwest Chamber Alliance represents seven different chambers of commerce here across the Boulder County region. That includes Boulder, Longmont, Louisville, Lafayette, Broomfield, Superior, and the Boulder County Latino Chamber of Commerce. They represent over 3,600 businesses who employ over 360,000 people across our community. Northwest Chamber Alliance looks at issues in one way only, unanimously. Each of those chambers looked at this plan, and they asked several questions. Is this good for the economy? Is this good for employers? Does this fit in with the values of our different communities? They spoke with one voice on this issue because they believed that all those questions were answered. So the reason that I'm here today, as opposed to folks from Louisville, is because this is a regional issue as much as it is a local issue. When we look at traffic on US 36, we have to ask ourselves, how can we plan better for the future? The plans that have been put forward are an enormous step in the right direction. The next question that I look at, as a former planning commissioner with the City of Longmont, is, is the applicant working in good faith with city staff, listening to voters, listening to people, and making changes based on those things? Just because a developer can do something doesn't mean a developer should do something. This developer could have come out with a much more aggressive plan, but what they did is they made moves to recognize the needs of the community and balance that with the needs of employers and employees. So we're asking you to move forward today with the understanding that this is one step in a very long process to move towards a better community for everybody, a better economy for everyone, and an opportunity to look at what should be a gold standard for development moving on in the future. So I look forward to the deliberations today and look forward to continuing this conversation as we move forward. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Jonathan.
Next is Tamar Krantz. On deck is Richard Morgan. Ms. Krantz is pooling her time with Mike Putney. Is he here?
Yeah, it's hard to follow somebody who I've respected for so many years saying that they feel like the developer is doing, is respecting the needs of the voters of Louisville. I don't really feel that that's the case. I feel like they've done a lot that's, things are, I wanted to talk about things that are just really atypical and unprecedented about this application. Now, I understand that what you're supposed to be doing is hearing the application before you, which is a subdivision plat, and I do understand that, and it is not the general development plan. But I want to, first, I want to ask, talk about some of the things in the process. Why are we hearing an application of a subdivision plat after the planning commission recommended denial? I mean, that's pretty atypical. Ordinarily, I would think that they would go back and try to resolve some of the issues that the planning commission had rather than coming forth with the same plan to you. And then, it's not exactly the same plan. They insisted that we had to have a preliminary and final, even though our code really clearly says that you should do a preliminary before you do a final. They insisted on doing both, bringing that to our planning commission, which was pretty atypical. And then, why would staff recommend approval after planning commission has recommended denial and only give you just like three short bullet points about why planning commission recommended denial? Then I saw that the applicant had an opportunity to respond to the things that the planning commission said, and some of those responses were pretty much like, you were wrong. Or, we proposed public roads where we previously were allowed to have private roads, but because it says, that because of a clause in there, we think that it means that there should be no restrictions on roads at all. And some of these things just don't make sense, so it seems really unprecedented to me. Finally, I wanted to say that on the city website for many, for probably about a month, it said that planning commission had recommended approval. So I think there's a lot of been really atypical things that have happened in that process. And so I'm going to ask you, maybe you guys could do some things that are a little bit atypical, too. And one of those is, though staff may discourage it, you can put conditions, additional conditions, on the approval. So, I mean, I would feel it would be appropriate to try to clarify some of the things. Like, for example, you, I was really shocked because I just looked at the, I looked at the PCZD agreement, and it does have, does say, except grading, they can't move forward with their subdivision, with a preliminary plat. I didn't realize that until just now, and I'm really glad that you pointed it out. But if they can start grading, then I think that maybe you can ask that they have, make some commitments to that subdivision improvement agreement at the preliminary phase. I mean, they're promising to do all these sustainability things, but what happens if, I understand they're submitting a final plat for the entire site, but they still have the right to submit a piecemeal plat, maybe just for the hospital. And what happens if the hospital says, oh, we don't want to abide by these sustainability commitments? They could still start grading for this already. So you could ask, I'm encouraging you to ask, at the preliminary phase, for some development agreement, something that says, we want to hold you to what you're saying in your subdivision improvement agreement, as far as sustainability, for the whole site. You can do that at the preliminary plat, especially in such an unusual case where this 2010 subdivision PCZD agreement allows them to start grading. I mean, I would hope that you would ask for more. You would ask for the final agreement from the school district, for example. I don't think it's too much. And then, if I have a little bit of time left, I just wanted to also talk about how atypical it is that we are going forward under a 14-year-old general development plan. Sure, the applicant has the right to submit a subdivision plat under a really old subdivision plan. But if you read the wording in the agreement, I just want to share a little bit of it with you. It doesn't mean that we're tromping on, I can't remember Mr. Maring's words, that we're like usurping their rights or something like that. It says here, I'm sorry about that. I'm so sorry. It's taking a little bit here. But it says that the owner acknowledges that certain actions, such as the review of subdivision plats and site-specific development plans are matters of quasi-judicial discretion, and no promises or assurances of favorable exercise of such discretion have been made or relied upon by the owner. It further says that this does not constitute a vested rights agreement. So yes, they have the right to submit this, but you also have the right to uphold the law and uphold the desires of the people. The first purpose of a subdivision plat is that it meets the health, safety, and welfare of the people of the city. You're allowed to consider that. You're allowed to consider that we had a vote and that people overwhelmingly wanted to have.
Can you wrap it up, please?
I wrap it up with, was my six minutes already?
It's your six minutes.
I can't believe how fast time flies, but I think that we have the right to ask for the things that the residents asked for in the election, which is condensed cluster development and more open space and less traffic. Thank you.
Thanks, Tamar.
Next is Richard Morgan, and after that, since it's 8 o'clock, we are going to take a short break before we continue with public comment.
Good evening, Mayor Lay, members of council. Thank you very much for what you do on behalf of our city. I'm Richard Morgan. I'm a Ward Two Louisville resident, and I'm speaking tonight to express my strong support for the 2023 Redtail Ridge Preliminary Plat. I appreciate that this is a very complicated topic and stirs emotions. Leading up to the referendum, I knocked on a lot of doors, and I spoke with many fellow residents. There was a lot of confusion. Notwithstanding the pushback over the last three years, the development team has listened to residents' needs and wants. It has worked to strike a balance between what is feasible and what is not. The project has been structurally redesigned to align with residents' goals for a smaller total building footprint. They've committed to commercial sustainability. They set aside over 260% more open space than the, than what was required by the 2010 GDP. They prioritize 40 acres along Northwest Parkway for Avista Hospital. And most importantly, they're committing to reengineering of Campus Drive, making a full-through street and eliminating the dead end, which you know Louisville police and fire departments consider highly problematic. This singular benefit of this development elevates the safety of our children and should be a top priority. Kicking the can down the road is not an option. The cost of further inaction is actually very costly to our community. The obvious is the potential loss of Avista Hospital, a cherished employer and vital community asset. At the last council meeting, you heard directly from Avista's chief operating officer. Avista must move to a more viable location and a more visible location in order to remain an operating business. Don't let Avista go the way of Medtronic, Kohl's, Lowe's, or many other now-gone Louisville businesses. Financially, Louisville could lose out on millions of dollars in local fees, annual tax revenue, new customers and unique tenants for our struggling downtown, South Boulder Road, and Macausen retail corridors. I know each of you are committed to doing what's best for Louisville. This project has the real possibility to generate good jobs, long-term sources of revenue, benefit our local business community, prioritize safety for our children that attend Monarch, and make accessible land currently off-limits to residents. Please vote to approve this preliminary plat. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard. We're going to take a five-minute break. It is 8:05. We'll be back at 8:10. Thank you. Thank you. Let's come on back in. Five minutes became 10, but that's probably just as well, so people get a chance to stretch their legs and so forth. Ruth, can you call the next person?
Next is Steve Donald, and on deck is Tim Stalker.
Good evening, everyone. I'm from the wrong side of 36. I'm Superior Person here.
It's on.
Anyway, yeah, sorry. I'll be shorter next time. So I've been here out since July 2000, and, you know, a lot has changed over here, you know, on here. And I think, you know, people are talking about the vocal minority here. I think the last referendum vote proved that the majority sees it a different way than maybe what they're saying. But let's just concentrate on the traffic, because as some of you brought up, I think that's the biggest issue I have with this. It's currently inadequate right now on 88th, on Dillon, during large segments of the day. And let's not pretend that's not going to change, even during the construction phase, which when they presented up the road timelines of their different roads, I just don't see how they're not going to seriously impact that before these roads are in that will support the additional traffic. And I'm not sure they will even support it as-is. And then the other thing is, you know, they're making a big deal about, you know, the traffic from the school on the Campus Drive, you know, on there, but now we're going to have traffic going both ways. And as somebody, you know, who lives in Superior, in the warmer months, I see all the kids, the little kids that walk back home and into work, and there's no underpass for that, or there's, you know, nothing other than, I guess they're expected to go back down to this light, you know, again, on a bigger road and so forth, that's going to, again, impact traffic because, you know, that long segment of, you know, time for them to cross, like it currently has, you know, on there. To the business environment, you know, I'd like to point out that Interlockin and the Flatirons Mall was just getting developed when I got here. Still not filled in Interlockin. Still, Flatirons Mall is, well, I shouldn't say still, it's dying. McCaslin Business Quarter dying on the other side of, you know, both sides of McCaslin, those business areas. So I don't even see the point of this whole development, but that's their money and that's their call. But I think that should weigh in on this decision here, on here. And let me just scan through here and see if I got everything. Yeah, that's everything. Everyone else can speak to the other points to it, but to me, it's just the traffic, and I don't think it's adequate, because it's not adequate now, and it's not going to be adequate in the future, you know, for there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tim Stalker, on deck is Cindy Bedell. Mr. Stalker is pooling his time with Joseph Krantz.
Hi, Tim Stalker from Louisville, Ward Three. I just want to take a minute. I think I need to address Mayor Pro-Tim Dickinson. You mischaracterized the email that you sent back to me. It's definitely in reference to the plat. It's definitely a breaking of the quasi-judicial rules, and you're not the person to decide whether you can be impartial or not. I recommend the council have some sort of executive session with the city attorney and vote on it, whether or not Mayor Pro-Tim can be impartial. That's what I suggest. I don't know when you would do that, but, okay. I'm going to get into the development a bit. I'm actually of the mind that the development and the city of Louisville are not mutually exclusive. I think that with some of the concessions that the developer has given the city so far, with some things they're going to do with sustainability in the building, seem promising. I think what I think you, as a council, are well within the ethics of doing is requesting more open space, more acres, in the subdivision, irregardless of what's been donated or dedicated outside of the city limits. Try to think about the site itself, the subdivision. And I'm going to go over just a few numbers that I think you need to know, especially in light of the fact that we know now that grading could begin much, much sooner than I had ever imagined, sort of like Tamara Krantz. The grading process and project will be over three years in three phases. It will be a grading of 306 acres of 389. They're going to create a watershed that will drain into six detention ponds, the largest of which will be in the furthest north area between Track C and Track D at the corner of Campus Drive and Sorrel Avenue. It's going to be designed to hold 17 acre feet of water. An acre foot of water is the amount of water that will fill one acre, one foot. So if that pond is an acre, it would have to be 17 feet deep, 20 or whatever the code would be for the ram around it, right? Okay. The grading is going to essentially destroy the ridge, right? There won't be a ridge to call Redtail Ridge, and there won't be any habitat left from a hawk that they're naming it Redtail with. It's going to be something else. It's going to be flatter. It's going to be sloped in six different directions towards six different detention ponds, draining all the basins from the northwest to the northeast quadrants of that site. And then somehow, in all of that, they're going to say, we've dedicated these acres to the city. And none of those acres are going to be open space without having to be something else in competition. They're going to have to grade and slope all of the ground in all of the open space areas. I grant them that. I give them that. It has to be graded. We want Campus Drive. We have to have Campus Drive. But they don't need to build that far north towards it. There could be a much broader, wider buffer between Campus Drive and the buildings. Some people have said, keep it to Disk Drive. I don't know if that's possible. Think about it in terms of additional acres that could possibly be distributed over that area. But you can't have open space anymore, I don't think, in our city that's so intertwined with so many other purposes. It has to be an easement. It has to be sloped properly for the roadway. It's going to serve as an underpass, as well as a drainage area, in two places under Campus The culverts operating as the trail are dual. One is built for a 100-year flood. The other one is elevated a bit and is built to a 10-year flood. The 10-year flood culvert is where the trail is. In April of 20, or in the spring of 2022, Louisville had 10 100-year rain events. That would have been 44 acre feet of water in storage, as planned by the development, in six ponds full. You have to ask yourself, and you need to consider how FEMA regulations all over the country have been put under a spotlight for being inadequate. They no longer account for the rain events that are so much more common now. Deluges. A 100-year storm event is 2 and 1/2 inches of rain in one hour. That's easily done now.
If you could wrap it up, please.
I'm good.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Cindy Bedell, and on deck is Laura Page.
Oh, hi, I'm Cindy Bedell. I live in Ward Two Louisville. Tonight, I've brought an extra-large bottle of digestive aid in case we're asked to swallow any more baloney from the development applicant, Chicago-based Sterling Bay. Sterling Bay is making the false and misleading claims in full-page ads in our local hometown Weekly and in their presentations to the city council and public. They're trying to make this development look like a nature preserve, when in fact, it's wall-to-wall sprawl destruction and development of 389 acres, which is currently full of native species and vegetation. If you go to the meeting video from February 6, at about 4:50 in, Sterling Bay, Rod Richardson says, "Planning Commission had several concerns. I'm pleased to present the new vision for Redtail Ridge. This presentation today is going to be new to just about everybody in the room. We've listened to the Planning Commission, the community. We've increased open space and we've reduced square footage." Wait, what? No, there is no more open space. There is not less square footage. There is not any significant change in this plat application since Planning Commission reviewed and recommended denial of it. There's no change, no significant change since Sterling Bay bought the property a few months before Planning Commission recommended denial in October or December of 2022. The residents of Louisville want a special election in April 2022 that rolled back previously approved development plans for Redtail Ridge. Louisville residents want all land north of Disk Drive to be preserved, and they allow 2.56 million square foot development to be clustered on or near the old storage tech footprint. Louisville residents want less traffic, more open space, more preservation of natural features, instead of grading almost the entire parcel, and honesty from the developer. Is that too much to ask for 8% of our town? City Council has the authority to require more and better quality undisturbed contiguous open space to preserve natural features. Do it. You have the authority. And remember, Northwest Parkway has not approved it because of traffic concerns, and remember Planning Commission recommended denial. So I'll be out there with my Pepto-Bismol if anybody needs some. Thank you.
Next is Laura Page, and on deck is Matt Jones.
Laura Page, Ward Three Louisville, 35-year resident. Mr. Bockel himself recognized the limits of the 2010 GDP. He stated to the former council that changes are needed to do anything on the property other than a basic corporate campus. During the run-up to the referendum vote, Bruce Bockel, Bru Bockel, excuse me, continuously posted side-by-side plans of the proposed Redtail Ridge development versus the ConocoPhillips development, asking, do you want their version or do you want CP's version? or do you want CP's version?" The voters rejected their sprawling plan, preferring instead CP's version, which compressed the same square footage of development into the center of the property and surrounded it with 50% more total open space, private and public, than Redtail Ridge is currently projecting. More open space has been offered by the applicant, but it is off-site in Boulder County and does nothing to preserve more of the land on the Redtail Ridge site where it's never been built on. Yet here we are considering basically the same plan as the one rejected by the voters. How can that be? And I'm guessing it's because the 2010 GDP lacks some of the detail that are required by code for the GDP because it was submitted at the same time as the plat and/or the PUD, not clear about that, and those documents have expired. If the council is unwilling to hold this applicant to the CP version that was conveyed in the CP plat, then the GDP should be nullified due to its insufficiencies. Doesn't have where the roads would be, which would have limited the scope of this development because it is based on the 2010 GDP. If council is unwilling to nullify it, then the applicant should at least be held to the required information that is contained in the GDP, and that is, quote, "The proposed use of all lands within the subject property." The chart on the GDP lists all possible uses the code allows, but then, as required, specifies which of those will be included in the development. Those uses convey to the city the character of the development, which in this case is a corporate campus. And I don't believe that you're able to put on the GDP that you're going to build a supermarket, say, and then come back and all of a sudden put a marijuana plant on there without amending the GDP. And yet that's what we seem to be doing, is all of a sudden we're saying, okay, that the specific uses listed in the GDP, we're going to throw those out and all of a sudden open this GDP up to all different uses. I don't think that's right, although I can be corrected on that. Our Planning Commission...
If you could wrap it up, please.
Well, I'm just hoping that we will ask for an amended GDP and that it will be done according to the wishes of the public. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Matt Jones, followed by Kelly Bartel.
Matt Jones, Louisville, Dutch Creek, in mighty Ward Three. Tonight, I want to talk to you about open space and how there's not enough of it at this site. And you need, through your quasi-digital process, using your code to require that. I think you'll agree, we all live in a great city. We're lucky. I feel lucky. It just didn't happen that way, though. We had active councils over the years and active citizenry to make it happen. And we're depending on you tonight in that same vein. When I first saw the plan that was being proposed, I was like, "What's going on? We just voted on this." It got voted down, got vastly outspent, five-point loss. It's an embarrassing loss, and yet we have the same basic plan. I can't believe it. So to me, what it says is it's in your hands to represent the public good, the public residents, to do what needs to happen at that site. Now, past councils have done that. If you look across the street at King Supers, the Harnell-Stokoe Open Space, that was slated for development. They said, "No, not there. We want a buffer between Lafayette and here." They've also done the same thing at Centennial Valley, where they had 40% public dedication, both golf course and open space. 40%, a lot more than what's in this plan. And you can do it. You can do it through Louisville Municipal Code. You can write this down if you want to reference it later. And it has criteria you can use to require more open space. And I would suggest to you, one of the criteria of topography, drainage, vegetation, and other such physical conditions fits this to a T. The drone overflight made the point. From Monarch, even you saw it, the drainage that's currently slated for open space attaches to the uplands and goes to tape drive. It all fits together. It's one chunk of ground. That's one of the criteria. Another is the type and density of development and employment. This is going to be the biggest vote you'd probably take as a council member. This is the most dense thing you will approve, and you need the relief of open space with So I'm counting on you. We're counting on you. When you do quasi-digital reviews, which I have done a bunch of, you make sure you comply with the criteria and you make sure you do the will of the public using those criteria. And you can do that for us tonight. Make the open space come from tape drive. You have the criteria to do it, and that's what people want. You can tell it in a vote. You can tell in the last vote, 3C.
Thanks, Matt.
Thank you. So we're depending on you. Hope you come through for us.
Thanks.
Next is Kelly Bartel, and on deck is Sherri Summer. Okay, next is Sherri Summer, and on deck will be Catherine Owaki. Ms. Summer is pooling time with a member of the public online.
Sherri Summer, so this is clearly a very valuable piece of property.
Just one sec.
Natasha Flyer is online. Can we reset the clock?
Sure.
Thank you so much, Meredith. I've been involved with this development application or the preceding one since 2019 because this is very important. This is very valuable. It'll have a huge impact on the people of Louisville. And we have not one but two private equity firms who are very interested in this. Now, we saw this video of this wasteland. I mean, if you look at the website for Sterling Bay, it's quite different. You know, Brew Bockel also said, "This is the crown jewel of the Front Range." And I went out there this weekend, and I looked from the BBS property at the habitat that we are advocating to save north of Disk Drive, and it is beautiful. There's so much life there. There's birds, there's grasses, there's... It's a carbon sink. It's so beautiful. It is not worth destroying. And the sad thing, it is not necessary. This is not necessary. This is a false dichotomy that we're being presented with. Either desolation and business wasteland, or we must have all this development. That is not true. All the applicant is allowed to have, could fit south of Disk Drive. And we're at the comp plan process, and this could be a reality. We talk about modern land use. This is not modern land use. This is sprawl. This is huge sprawl. We could preserve habitat where so many animals live, and we could have a healthy business, and it wouldn't have to take so long. This is taking so long because the reality is we are not being listened to. There's so many people who say they're listening, but it is not listening because it doesn't really reflect what voters have been asking for. Yes, we can say, "Oh, the referendum is passed. That's over." But the fact of the matter is, it needs to have more than an impact than throwing a rock in a pool, and then the ripples die away and there's nothing left. People advocated for things, and they've been advocating them for them for four years. No development north of Disk Drive, no sprawl. That is not modern. That is not forward-looking. No destructive and unnecessary grading. We are killing, flattening this property. Yes, a public land dedication of 50% with a 40% open space dedication, 100% developer-financed upgrades. These are things that people have asked for. They fit with our municipal code. They are all supported by our municipal code, which you all swear an oath to, and you have the authority of that code when you swear that oath. Now, I know the city attorney said, she said, "This is a whole new application. Everything must be based on the code." Well, I can tell you, for the last two years, we have been writing letters all based on the code, and I'm very sorry that it took so long to get in the packet. If you look at all the letters from Planning Commission, which did not get into the packet in a timely way, we argued all on municipal code. We know it back and forth. And it's very important. That's why the Planning Commission recommended denial, not because there were a lot of us, not because we had our hearts full of love for the environment. It's because we did that hard work of arguing, and you need to recognize that. If you need more time to have another session for deliberations, you should because our letters are amazing. Our understanding of the code is correct. And you can do both. You can preserve that habitat, and you can allow for development. You know, it really does need to matter that the referendum is considered. We have, in our charter, Chapter 7.5, it says, "No referred ordinance repealed by the registered voters may be readopted by the council." Now, this is not exactly the same, right? It's not an ordinance. We don't have all the sustainability guidelines. But you know what? It doesn't really matter in terms of practical implications for the habitat and for the people of Louisville. It doesn't really matter that those technicalities are different. We've spoken, and you really, really need to listen to us because we have spoken with authority. Now, you know, I know it's hard. There's a quote. It says, "It's very hard..." And I also would like to second all the things that Ms. Bedell said about the open space and how that's not any more or any better. I'd like to say, you know, look at Davidson Mesa. It's like somebody gave you a sandwich, a delicious sandwich, and they gave you the whole thing. This open space is like somebody took, ate 3/4 of it, they gave you the crust, and then they smoshed part of it, and they said, "Hey, you know what? This meets the... This is the percentages you need. This is great. Believe me, this is great." This is not great. This is not a Davidson Mesa. This is the crust. This is the crumbs. This is the undevelopable part. Paradise Lane was low residential density. Now, this entire habitat is going to be destroyed with high-density development. Please, please, for the sake of all that sane and good and right, please, please listen and do the right thing, and you can support business and the people.
Thank you, Sherri.
Next is Catherine Owaki, and on deck is Mike Schantz. Mike, you're up then. And on deck will be Josh Cooperman.
Good evening. My name is Mike Schantz, 623 West Hickory Court, Ward Two. Over the course of my nine years serving on the Open Space Advisory Board, I've actually had the opportunity to tour the Redtail Ridge site twice. So I feel like I've gotten a pretty good sense of that site. I think it's a critical site to this city. We've heard that tonight, and I think that's quite obvious. At the time of the citizen referendum, to void the approved Rubacall GDP amendment for this Redtail Ridge site, I noted there was a wide variety of objections to this development. These objections included the following. This project would take resources away from the Marshall Fire rebuild. The project didn't include enough public land dedication. The project didn't provide for enough sustainable development measures, or simply that the property shouldn't be developed at all. As we know, these arguments won the day in a tightly contested and very close citizen referendum in 2022. Given where we are today and the good faith plan improvements made by Sterling Bay, I think it's quite reasonable to say that these first three objections have been addressed by the new plan. Two years post-fire, we are well on our way to having our neighbors back. The increase in the public land dedication on the current plan preserves the highest resource value portions of the property and concentrates development in the areas most heavily impacted by prior development. How do I know that? I've walked the site more than once, and in fact, when it was an open space, we actually gave feedback to the prior developer about the highest value areas, and they adjusted the plan accordingly. None of that has been represented in these comments tonight, but that's a fact. Presumably, this is why the project has been approved by Open Space on multiple occasions. The sustainability commitments to this plan are impressive and would set a great new regional example for the type of responsible development we should want to see as a city moving forward. I also contend that simply not wanting this property to be developed isn't responsible from either a governmental or environmental position. Not approving this plan would simply result in these new facilities being built somewhere else with greater impacts to flora and fauna. Example would be Medtronic, which at one point was slated for this site and was ultimately constructed on a greenfield site with greater environmental impacts and where another municipality now has the jobs and tax base associated with this facility. So in summary, let's say yes to a new site for Avista, more open space, new park facilities, new trail connections, the completion of Campus Drive, and more local jobs and increased tax base, while setting a new example for a more sustainable future by responsibly developing this brownfield site.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Next is Josh Cooperman, and on deck is Wei Yan Chen.
Josh Cooperman, I live in Louisville. As I have said on too many other occasions, I am not opposed to development at the Phillips 66 Rural Special District. Indeed, I think that the former storage tech footprint is really a great place to redevelop. I am also very happy for Avista to relocate there if they would like to, and I'm also very happy to see Campus Drive extended. But there needs to be a balance between development, or at least redevelopment, and conservation and environmental sustainability, among other things. And I think that this development proposal is not yet balanced, and that we can do better. The developer has certainly made efforts to address residents' concerns. They have offered some more open space, although a lot of it is not on the site. They have offered to grade the site less than they were previously planning. They have made a lot of sustainability commitments, which are excellent. But there are a few issues which they haven't really addressed, namely clustering of the site, and related to that is the overall footprint of the development. And that's where I'd like to see some movement. Regarding the proposal itself, I've written about what I see as some issues with its compliance with the code. In particular, I'm not... It's not clear to me that the proposal is really consistent with the ConocoPhillips general development plan, which also plays into some of the aspects in the comprehensive plan that people have talked about before. And I pointed out several places in the purposes and design standards for subdivisions where I believe that the application doesn't necessarily meet those purposes or design standards. A lot of these issues are related, in particular, having to do a lot with grading and where roads are located and where open space could or could not be, things like that. So I think before you take any action, I thought there would be an actual grading plan given tonight, but I haven't seen a grading plan that takes into account the reduced amount of grading that the developer promised at the last meeting. I would like to see an explicit plan that shows the actual cutting and filling, and I think you actually really need that document to make any judgments about the purposes and design standards that I mentioned before. So I'd just like to end by saying, a few years ago, I reached out to the developer and made some comments that I've made subsequently, and I offered to support their proposal if they would make some of those adjustments. And I'd just like to say that offer still stands. Thank you.
Thanks, Josh.
Next is Wei Yan Chen, and on deck is John Wu.
My name is Wei Yan Chen, 146 Cherry Wood Lane. So, Mr. Mayor and the council member, I... I want to ask you a question first. Do you remember Marshall Fire? Okay. We, as city Louisville, lost more than 500 houses. Half of my streets are gone, and those neighbors and residents lost their house, have 200% of my sympathy for that, for their loss. After the fire, when I went home for the first time, I couldn't even park... After the fire, when I went home for the first time, I couldn't even park my car on my own street. I have to park outside of the neighborhood, because Excels Energy's truck parked, I mean, endless. They are doing their thing. And then after that is mitigation process. God knows how many car trucks went through my street. And after that is the mitigation trucks, and after that is the construction trucks. On the last Friday, 3:00 PM, when I walked through my neighborhood, four heavy-duty trucks, all of them idling but running, and two heavy machines are all in my street, 20 yards away from my house. I have been living in this traffic construction for more than two years. And don't mention the fire pushed the animals into the neighborhood, and some of my neighbors had mice, went to their basement. I'm lucky, I got nine skunks, went to under my front porch. So, all they say, and you name it, gas leaks, power outage, water outage during this construction. What I want to say here is, City of Lewisville is still under construction, that you dare forget that. And we cannot start another huge construction like this. We need a break. I'm tired about a big truck parked 20 yards from my house, and I have not been able to sit in my backyard for more than two years. We are not big city. We are not Chicago. We need some break. We need the quiet, small town. Thank you.
Thanks.
Next is John Wu, and on deck is Joshua Sroeg.
Hello, Mayor and the City Councils. And I wasn't planning to speak, but I was just realized that someone's calling us like a misinformed anti-business minority, and I said I probably should say something about it. We are not the only one having issues with the project, and I think, you know, we certainly have a lot of traffic right now at 95th already. You know, adding this project's not going to help that situation there. Yes, we all enjoy the downtown very well, and because we could go there, find a parking spot. Thinking about it, we come to the point, we couldn't even find a parking spot in downtown. How can we enjoy the city we have, love so much? And I really like to see the City Council and the mayor taking into consideration all the people against this project or have issue with this project, and really making a good balance of what is business, what is open space for the city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Joshua Sroeg, and on deck is Michael Menaker.
Hey, everyone. Thank you, fellow citizens. Thank you, City Council, and mostly the employees. Pretty thankless job to be here and listen to all this. We're not going to change any minds. In fact, I came up here at like 8:00 thinking I wouldn't even get a chance to speak. And, you know, we heard a lot of arguments, a lot of people citing detailed code and things of that nature with a lot of notes. I came up here to wing it. And the real thing is, I haven't heard the words "private property" at all, right? We all live in houses. They belong to us. We have to maintain them and change our property in accordance with code. This property belongs to somebody, right? Private equity firm. Hey, I don't care if it's a bunch of rich guys singing on the yacht. It belongs to somebody, right? They have some rights, right? We can sit up here and demand, we want some open space. We want, you know, these kinds of things. We don't want to disturb the animals. Hey, that's all fair and good. I love open space. I live six blocks up near the mayor. It's really lovely to have that open space. I would love more, right? But we walk out tonight from this meeting. What do we see? We see a main street that's half-empty, right? 2009, there's a beautiful money magazine sitting out there saying, oh, we're the top town in America to live in. 15 years, we've effectively deconstructed that, right? Look at Main Street. Look at McCaslin. I mean, I don't shop here. I shop in Superior. I eat in Lafayette. I go to Erie where the growth is really impressive, right? The developments are exciting. People go there to do business. How do we bring that back here, right? This is a bigger picture than just, well, you know, the code says we should resubmit this, resubmit that. Think big, think meta, right? Think, how are we going to make a bold move here? How are we going to change the dynamic and the direction of this community? Yes, we got hit by the fire. Yes, we've had challenges, and we're not responsible for the overall economy, but we are responsible for this town. So I'll give the rest of my time back to, well, to Michael and to other people who want to speak, but clearly, I'm not going to change minds. But I come up here with my thought, which is, this project or not, we've got to make some bold moves. We got to appreciate the capital that people are going to put into this town, and that is a big chunk of capital going in there. And I appreciate their private property. Thank you for your time. Thank you again, fellow citizens, the council, and especially the city employees.
Thank you, Josh.
Michael Menaker, and on deck is Sally Bruggerman. Mr. Menaker's pulling his time with George Colbert.
Mayor and Council Michael Menaker, I live at 1827 West Joke Cherry Drive. And unlike Josh, I hope to change your mind or two before I'm done here. I want to begin with something that just leapt out of the proposal at me, and I hope it did at you. 3,000 new trees. Hold that thought. I want to go back in time to 1954, when Dwight D. Eisenhower commissioned and set up the National Bureau of Standards, the beginning of Boulder's technology community. Two years later, Ball Aerospace located in Boulder County. Four years later, NCAR was established. One year after that, in 1961, nine months after the Blue Line was established, Boulder voters, by a 3.5 to 1 margin, voted to violate the Blue Line to allow NCAR to be built. In 1965, IBM came, and 15 years after President Eisenhower designated the National Bureau of Standards, Storage Technology Corporation opened in Lewisville. At its peak, it provided over 7,000 jobs, and it begat Exobiden, it begat McDada, and it begat technology company after technology company, to the point that we became known as the Silicon Mountain. Why do I reference this? Because now before us today, we have the opportunity here in Lewisville to be president at the creation of a new future even brighter than that, which was begun in 1954. We are talking about building a biotech, life tech, life sciences campus. The miracles of the future will be created, designed, and built in those buildings. We talk about the buildings, we talk about the roads, we don't talk about what's going to happen in there. Miracles will happen in there, and it will be anchored by Avista Hospital, not only our largest current employer, but a savior of lives, including mine. My life has been saved three times inside the walls of Avista Hospital, and my vision has been saved as well. There is no one that believes more in the future of Avista than I do. I'm 74 years old. I will never be able to walk on the 430 acres that have been closed to all of us, except for the privileged few on open space, since 1969 at the absolute latest. What's proposed will be beautiful. It will be accessible to all. It will combine open space as large as that, which runs from Harper Lake to Coyote Run. I hope I've got another three. And it'll be there for all of us to live, to all of us to enjoy, and all of us to share. I got three.
He's got three more minutes.
We can all be part of that, and we just need to have the vision and the optimism and the enthusiasm to make it happen. A few details. On open space concerns and grading, I'd be more impressed with that argument if we didn't consider Crown Jewels of Open Space to be Harney, Lestoca, and Mahoffer properties, which have been coal mined, farmed, terraformed, tilled, fertilized, ditched, graded for over a century, and we love them to death and thought they were the most important acquisitions we could possibly make. The grading won't hurt. The new landscaping plan is environmentally sound. It's dramatically gorgeous, and it will be established. The traffic, at its height, the 7,100 employees at Storage Tech generated about 13,000 trips per day. That's not much more than the 15,000 and change that will be taken by the new Redtail Ridge development, once you discount the 25% of the traffic going to the hospital. As for the emergency lane, just quickly, that's why you're supposed to move over to the sign, you know, when the sirens come. That creates a lane. I understand if you're in a private car, they're not going to get out of your way, but that's not really the situation we're talking about. If you move to the right, they have a lane. That's why we do that. The traffic just isn't as daunting as it might sound. I do hope the traffic studies are wrong. They show a great deal of the traffic not coming from Lewisville. I'd like to see more coming from Lewisville. That means your children, your grandchildren, our friends and neighbors will be working and living in Lewisville at these new jobs. We've made great efforts in this town to honor and preserve our past. I would urge you now to take the time to embrace the future and the opportunity this presents. I come back finally to those 3,000 trees. A tree planting a tree is a gift to the future. I will not live to see it shade. There is a Greek proverb that goes back to antiquity that simply states, "A society grows great when old men plant trees whose shades they know they will never sit under." Plant a tree for the future. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Michael. Sorry about that. Didn't mean to interrupt you.
Next is Sally Bruggerman, and on deck is Michael Eisenstein.
Sally Bruggerman, 295 McKinley Park Lane. I'm sitting here observing tonight, and it just seems there's kind of two factions. There's the business community primarily. They want the money, right? We all do. Tax money, that's all good. It's important, we need that. And then it seems like there's the people who are more concerned about the environment and the open space. And it just seems like a really simple, easy solution is to build everything south of Disk Drive. Everybody gets what they want. No problem. Thank you.
Next is Michael Eisenstein on Zoom.
Yes, hi. Do you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, yes. My name is Michael Eisenstein, and I am the owner of 088 Street LLC. 088 Street LLC owns the corner property at 88th and Campus. It is adjacent, it's adjacent neighborhood on two sides to the Redtail Ridge project. It is also the only other property within the ConocoPhillips GDP boundary, and I have high concern with the proposed preliminary and final plat and ultimate further development plans and how it'll impact my property value. Specifically, my concerns are related to the dramatic increase in traffic. My property is right at the intersection of this massive project. I find it highly unusual that no one from Redtail Ridge Project has reached out to me personally to talk about the traffic implications. Traffic stacking and volume along 88th Street and Campus Drive will impact the ingress and egress to my property. There is a potential to devalue my property and make it worthless. And also, the preliminary plat and final plat are not in accordance with the City of Lewisville Comprehensive Plan. Specifically, the Comprehensive Plan contemplates a roundabout, non-traffic signal at 88th and Campus. Moreover, the Comprehensive Plan requires that streets, arterial corridors, intersections do not negatively affect the adjacent neighborhoods, historic assets, natural resources, or emergency responses. The preliminary plat and final plat violates the provision of the Comprehensive Plan, as there will be extreme negative impact to adjacent neighborhoods and properties and natural resources, as substantial paving of roads will occur under the preliminary plans. Also, the Comprehensive Plan designates this site as rural pattern. The rural pattern requires that infrastructure be native landscape. The grading plans for the Redtail Ridge project are not in accordance with native landscape infrastructure and are a violation of the Comprehensive Plan. So, you know, it's designated as a special district. The proposed uses on a Redtail Ridge project do not comply with either the Comprehensive Plan or the permitted uses in the GDP. The preliminary and final plat also do not appear to meet the requirements of the land use mix in the Comprehensive Plan or the GDP. And also, the final plat does not comply, the proposed preliminary and final plat do not comply with the Lewisville Municipal Code, including without limitation, Section 16.16, Related Preservation of Natural Features and Vegetation, Section 16.04, which requires a subdivision to avoid traffic congestion, and Section 16.16, Related to Drainage Areas. I feel, you know, I'm also not listened to, and I'm actually in the ConocoPhillips GDP. It's time to listen to people, and I'm a developer, and I've always had to talk to neighbors, work with neighbors, to make development happen. In this case, they just want to bulldoze over me, and they want to bulldozer over the entire community. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael.
I have no more cards.
So we're at the moment, can you?
I do have some more online all of a sudden.
Yeah, that's, who do you have online?
So next would be Cliff Harold, and on deck would be David Swidler.
Hello?
Cliff, it looks like you're unmuted, but we're not hearing you. Yeah, we seem to be having a problem with your mic. If you want to try again, I can come back to you. David Swidler?
I just unmuted. I'm David Swidler, 956 St. Andrews Lane in Lewisville, currently residing in Longmont due to the Marshall Fire and returning when the house is reconstructed. I would urge you to either extract various concessions from the builder developer, or as outlined by other residents and speakers, or just flat-out reject the plan and ask them to come back with one that is a little more suitable for our community. I'm living adjacent to 88th Street, and it is definitely, I can't stress that there is going to be more than 2% of the total 21,000 trips each day are going to be rerouting onto 88th Street in order to avoid traffic jams on 96th and Dillon Road. There's no way around it. People use Apple Maps and Google Maps to route even their commute, because in real time, it will monitor for accidents and lane closures, and even anything that slows the traffic down, the AI will basically come up with alternative routes, and that's going to cause people to shuttle onto 88th Street in order to avoid the heavy traffic that's building up at the 96th intersection. So I don't know how you guys are going to deal with widening Dillon and 96, but you've already added some extra lights for the, I think it's a Conoco along 96 coming into town. And so I really think that this whole redevelopment plan needs to be looked at very carefully with respect to all the other development and urban infill that's occurring along the Dillon Road and 96th Avenue, 96th Street corridor. And I don't know what's going to happen to the Avista property. I mean, they haven't said, but I am concerned that if Avista moves into Redtail Ridge, they're assuming that we're just going to take the traffic that they've, that they created to use the hospital, and they're just going to magically have no redevelopment occur in that site when it may turn out to be what? Retail apartments, condos? I don't know, but it's not likely that there's going to be no traffic left behind when they redo, when they have a redevelopment of the Avista site. I assume it'll get scraped. There's also some empty space around it. I don't, that hasn't been, that hasn't come up for discussion, but it will impact our neighborhood and our community. So I would definitely urge you to ask them for concessions, improvements to the plan, or just flat-out reject it. Thank you.
Thank you, David.
Next is Jenny Singer-Rupp, and on deck will be Cliff Harold.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great. Good evening, City Council members, and good evening, Mayor. My name is Jenny Singer-Rupp. I'm a Lewisville Ward Three resident. I remember when this site was the headquarters for Storage Tech. My dad's first job out of college was actually at Storage Tech. We moved to Kennedy Avenue when I was a few years old, and I attended Coal Creek Elementary School in the first, first grade. My husband also worked at Storage Tech for a time. Storage Tech was a vibrant employer, and under the leadership, including Jesse Ovita, gave back a lot to the community. Storage Tech worked with the City of Lewisville. There've been many council and commission meetings since the initial development application by Bruba Call for this site. Two years ago, the city invested $90,000 of taxpayers' money to finance a referendum to put the application to a vote by Lewisville residents. And in the midst of utter chaos, which was our lovely Marshall Fire, displaced residents took the time to get their ballots after the fire to cast their vote. I was one of those residents. I was almost unable to vote, which would have been a first for me, as I was just too overwhelmed with losing our home and the daunting task of piecing our life back together to figure out how to vote with our temporary residents. But I did it. We did it. We voted, because that was our civic duty. The residents rejected the proposal, as well as the planning commission, and asked the applicant to review the proposal. Then something happened that surprised me. The applicant did nothing to engage with the public, to gather feedback, to adjust their proposal to address the referendum results. The City Council also did not create a space for the applicant to engage with the residents based on the results to adjust their proposal to address the residents' concerns. The lack of engagement, the lack of due process has been disheartening. The applicant just resubmitted their plans, albeit to a new City Council that has four new members. The lack of regard for all the residents that cast their votes April 2022 to voice their concerns about this proposal in very trying circumstances is disheartening. I urge, I urge all of you, all of our representatives, to listen to the large number of residents that oppose the current proposal. You can ask the applicant for more dedicated open space. You can ask the applicant to reduce the footprint. You can ask the applicant not to grade the entire area. There's a lot of work that needs to be done in Lewisville. Let's revitalize the developed spaces that we already have. I love what's happened at the old Coles Building. Let's focus on getting everyone home after the Marshall Fire, instead of starting a development that many residents are very nervous about and rejected in a referendum. Please demand that the applicant address the concerns of residents regarding the proposal, and actually listen to us, and make these demands or reject the current proposal. Thank you very much. Thanks.
Next is Cliff Harold, and on deck is Brian Boonstra. Cliff, you need to unmute on your end. All right, I think we're going to move on to Brian Boonstra. You need to unmute on your end, Mr. Boonstra.
Yeah, I'm unmuted. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
All right, thank you. I'll be brief. My name is Brian Boonstra. I live at 9555 Paradise Lane, and as such, I am one of the handful of landowners that will be immediately affected by this development. I am, I believe, one of the closest properties to this development. I am speaking today to urge you strongly in favor of approving this development. I believe the land, or the developers worked with me and my neighbors over the last several years to ensure our questions have been met. I think they have gone above and beyond in terms of trying to balance the need for development, open space, and infrastructure development. This plan is the result of literally years of process, and I'm concerned that many of the speakers tonight seem to believe that the choice you're facing is one of no development versus development, and that is simply not the case. This land will get developed at some point. The proposed development you have in front of you is wildly better than the GDP that has already been approved. So, I'm urging you to vote in favor of the development. Thank you.
Okay, we are once again, I guess, at the end of the queue. Nobody on Zoom has, I don't see anybody who's lit up there. Is there anybody in council chambers now, or out in the wings, who hasn't spoken, who would still like to make a public comment? It's a dead silence, isn't it? All right. The next part I have been told, actually, is that we need to give the applicant who bears the burden in all of this to demonstrate that they're sufficient under the rules, an opportunity to respond to any of the concerns that have been raised by the public, or questions that have been raised in the, in the staff presentation. Are there any comments of the applicant?
Mayor Lee Mark Painter from Holland and Hart, on behalf of the applicant. I think at this point, no, we're happy to answer questions from the council, but don't have any points that we want to specifically address.
Thanks. We may call you or others back up in just a little bit. Why don't we, I am tempted, only because it's a point of personal privilege to take about a five-minute break, and then we'll start with, with our clarifying questions and get our discussion going. All right, we're back on. The first thing we're going to do is, if council have questions, additional questions for staff or the applicant, we'll start there, and then we'll start discussing the specifics of the application that are before us. But let's start with council questions. You have questions? Go ahead, Mayor Burton.
Ms. For staff, just a couple, couple of questions on, I won't go through all of them with the questions, but some of the planning commission reasons for denial. Just curious if you can give us some input on the block length issue that they brought up, that there's maybe a block that was too long? I wonder if that's the hospital or otherwise.
Yeah, so the block length issue is that within the subdivision code, there's a, a block length requirement that wasn't met. They were asking for a waiver to that through the planning commission process. What they have done since planning commission is add private street network that does meet the block length requirement.
Okay. And then, the public roads, again, they had a reason for denial was because it didn't meet the, I believe, the comp plan or the GDP.
The general development plan calls for private roads.
And so, can you speak to that issue, or what, how staff feels about?
Right, so I, I think that what's most important is the road network is, works and is functioning. I think the, you know, whether they're public or private is often a matter of who's going to own and maintain them. What's being proposed here is that there are some private roads, there are some public roads, and that the city would maintain the hardscapes, and the metro district would maintain the landscaping within the right-of-way. That's the proposal. So, I think staff felt that whether it was public or private, the road network matches that of the general development plan substantially, so we felt like that was adequate compliance.
This is a surprise question, so I don't, it's okay if you don't have this at your fingertips. But with the CTC, which of those road, like, I'm just looking for comparison, which of those are public or private? Are they all public, all private?
All public.
Okay. Okay, all public. That surprises me, I think, comparatively.
Yes, they're all public.
Thanks for having that knowledge at your fingertips. And then, let someone else, I wanted, I wanted, those are the main questions I had about the planning commission denials. Somebody else wants to take a turn, I can think more about other questions, or I can keep going.
Councilmember Dickinson, maybe there's a clarification?
I just, on, on behalf of the developer, I just wanted to clarify, on the point of the roads being public or private under the GDP, though, there's been this discussion about, were private roads required by the GDP? And the language of the GDP doesn't really say that. It mentions that the roads are examples, and they are proposed as private roads, but they're only examples, and they're subject to modification at a later point. I agree completely with Mr. Zakhar about the, the, the actual effect and the practical effect, but I didn't want it to sound like we were trying to amend the GDP in any way.
Okay. I can ask one more, then. There's, there was a concern brought up around sort of, I think you kind of addressed it, is like to understand it deeper, public to understand deeper, is the idea of like memorialization of the applicant's commitment. So, again, what we had in a 2021 GDP was some things written into that GDP that they were going to have to do. That's gone, totally understand that. We're back to 2010, doesn't have some of those. We're getting some promises, for instance, the solar, the amount of solar that's coming, we're getting a promise about that, but that's not typically part of a plat. And is that something that we will get an official commitment to by final? Or is it, because it isn't part of a normal plat process, will we never get that? I mean, are there, maybe if you can give me some examples of some of the commitments that aren't necessarily related to a plat typically, and what we're able to guarantee they do in a later point?
Yeah, so I think, you know, all of their commitments, they're on the record, we'll know what they are, we're able to track them. There is a subdivision improvement agreement and development agreement that we're anticipating that would come with final, where we could memorialize the sustainability commitments and the transportation demand management commitment, or the, the two formal ones that I'm aware of, other than the public land dedications. It'll also dictate who's building, you know, there, that the developer is building the public infrastructure, and there'll be a, there'll be maintenance agreements, there'll be intergovernmental agreements with Broomfield and Northwest Parkway that'll be presented as well to talk about who maintains what in and around the subdivision.
I appreciate that. And then, maybe my last question, I hope there are lots more coming from other people, but anyways, a lot of talk about Campus Drive. I think one of the, one of the clearest things to me is that everyone's really excited about Campus Drive being finished. But there's issue with its location, with its path, with previous designs, with current design, some issues with, you know, the contiguous open space and feeling like Campus Drive dipping down. I mean, Campus Drive I mean, campus drive has to exist, but I know there were thoughts of, of having it be farther north versus its current alignment. Can you just speak again, I've been at this for a few years, but can you speak again to why it's not just an easy, like, let's just put the road farther north? Or, or again, if you, if you feel like the applicant has a better answer, that's fine, but just trying to understand why it's not an easy thing to just put that road up higher?
Right, so some of the considerations, and yes, in 2010, the preliminary plans were anticipating the road would go north and connect to Paradise Lane. And as we've gone through this review process, the consideration was potentially to move it to the south, and that's what's before you. And the, a few of the reasons are, there's a, a buffer requirement from development. It doesn't specify roads, but it just says that any development needs to be buffered to the Paradise Lane residential properties. So the concept was to re, to move the road further to the south in order to help provide a buffer to those properties. That's an intergovernmental agreement with Boulder County, that, and Boulder County saw that favorable as it relates to the language of that IGA. So that's influenced the design to have it go south rather than it going to the north. From a traffic operation standpoint, I think either of the alignments could work from a traffic operation standpoint, but there's other reasons why it would be desirable to move it to the south.
Okay. And then this is maybe, I'm surprised, it's hard when part of the, part of the meeting is on the sixth and parts on the twentieth, right? It's been two weeks between presentations and comments and questions, and so want to be clear on, on the responsibility of a developer for the traffic, right? Traffic has been one of the biggest topics tonight and, and really over the last few years. They, they're, we don't have any sort of maximum amount of traffic that a project is allowed to add, it's more around dealing with the amount of traffic that the project would add. Is there any, so I, I think I understand that, and I know, I believe the commitment to outside of the actual development is 25 million total, that's for all the different intersections that there, and roads are trying to improve. But is that really kind of like, was, we're assessing, because again, this is another planning commission issue, is that it's bringing too much traffic? Is there, is there such a thing as too much traffic, or it needs to deal with the traffic it brings? How, how does that work?
Yeah, so, so typically, the city's gonna regulate the intensity of development through the zoning, so that's gonna be how, how many square feet of development, the types of development. Once you've set that standard of what can be developed there, once you get into this process, you're really looking at how to accommodate the traffic that comes from that development. So that, we do the, the traffic study, and then there's improvements meant to maintain level of service. We're also looking at multimodal connections and all of that. So the, I, when the subdivision code says that, you know, you need to be addressing congestion, it's, because the zoning's already set, that needs to be addressed through the infrastructure that's built in order to accommodate the anticipated traffic that's allowed by zoning. And then there's also language in our zoning agreements about promoting multimodal, that's an agreement that ran with the land, so to try, there is a agreement to try to limit vehicular, single occupancy vehicular traffic, but there's no limit through a subdivision on traffic. It's basically building the infrastructure.
Dealing with the traffic there? So if I'm hearing you correctly, the idea is, we don't allow 20-story buildings and, you know, total coverage of a lot, because that would bring 100,000 car trips, and we know that, like, the, our zoning and our, and our comp plan design, the allowable uses that are going to bring, you know, a certain amount of traffic, and then we know, that, that's kind of where we're dealing with, with the traffic maxes. And now here, I'm getting that, again, in the, in the subdivision plat, is when we deal with the traffic that's coming, and is it dealt with appropriately? And that was what you guys are trying, staff is, through the traffic study and all that stuff, trying to assess if all of those mitigation things. I know it's complicated, too, because you have, right? I wonder, and this is maybe a side I don't need to take. Okay, well, I appreciate those answers.
Councilmembers, yes, Councilmember Fahey, questions?
I just have a quick question on the maintenance of the parks and open spaces. Is that something that gets decided now or at a future date?
That'll get decided with the final plat, that's when it will be formally agreed upon. But right now, what is being proposed is that the city would maintain the trails, the parks, and the open space that is being proposed within the development, and then we jointly work with Boulder County on the Paradise Lane property management.
So the, the metro district wouldn't cover any of those expenses?
The metro district, the, what is being proposed right now is the metro district would maintain the right-of-way landscaping, but once the, and they would actually construct the trails and the roads, or they'd finance it, and then the, the city would be maintaining that infrastructure. So oftentimes, it's desirable for the city to maintain that to our standard. There's pros and cons to structuring it any particular way.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Yes, Councilmember Kern.
Thank you. I'm actually just gonna follow up on Councilmember Fahey's question. So if we are talking about the city at this point, and I know it's a little early because it's still part of the preliminary phase, the, has there been conversation or consideration to the cost? And can the budget handle it, given that's like a big part of our conversation right now through citywide?
Right, so we, so we do consider the fiscal balance of a development. We, we typically don't do fiscal modeling when it's a by right development, but when land uses are changing, we look at fiscal modeling. Typically with a commercial development like this, the revenues offset the costs for services, so that's to maintain the infrastructure. So the, you know, the fiscal analysis that we do, you know, anticipates expanding staff, expanding facilities, expanding equipment needed to maintain the additional development. So we do get revenues from a development like this that, that offset these costs and cover the costs of the additional city services.
And is there a time in the land dedication, it's, it's being identified as different things, open space, parks, but is all just dedicated land to the city? Is there a time that this, like, the city could change their minds and say, it's not gonna be park and open space, it's gonna be whatever, you know?
So I, what I would recommend is that with the final plat, so the final plat's gonna designate the public lands because of our charter provisions for when things are designated as open space, then they have to get zoned open space and all of those requirements, that if you intend to have open space with the final plat, it should be specifically called out. I would suggest that the park parcel is more flexible. It could be designated, if a future council wanted to change that from a park to open space, that would be much easier, and that if you all wanted to have even more flexible dedication, you could put that language in the final plat, just to be really clear that you have that flexibility.
Thank you.
Can I piggyback on the parks question? So I understand from what you're saying that we're, if you will, on the hook for maintenance, or if, like, if the park is gonna have, say, a soccer field or pickleball courts or something like that, am I hearing that they, they're building and we're maintaining, or the park we would be building?
Yeah, so the proposal is that they would not build the park, they would just dedicate the land for the park.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that, thank you.
Other questions? Councilmember Hamilton.
Two questions. The first is Disk Drive. So there's, we've heard multiple comments tonight about Disk Drive, everything north of it, remaining open space, yet what we're looking at tonight is development on that. So I'd love to hear more about why this path has been chosen as far as that part of the land goes, and I don't know whomever wants to give insight on that.
Yeah, thank you for the question. A couple things, and I'll, I'll ask a few members of my team to join me up here, but one key thing is after the, after meetings with the Parks and Open Space Boards and Planning Commission, but mainly the Open Space Advisory Board, we opted to move the open space to the northwest corner of the site based on feedback received. And so then that started to naturally cluster our development, kind of the remaining space for development towards the center of the site. So by dedicating so much open space in that corner, we're naturally, naturally clustering development at the center of the site, in addition to that nature preserve at the kind of northeast corner and slightly south of the proposed campus drive. I think we'd also like, and I'll call Kristen up here, just to comment about the current status of the habitat onsite to kind of quell some of that, so I'll bring her up here to talk about that.
Thank you. I'm Kristen Oles, Restoration Ecologist with the High Plains Environmental Center, and we're a nonprofit based out of Loveland, so local group. And just to speak a little bit about the, the state of the land north of Disk Drive, one thing I wanted to point out that we looked at in the drone footage, there was one shot north of Disk Drive that showed a, a line of trees, and every single one of those trees was actually a non-native and invasive Russian olive species, so there, there are quite a bit of those on the site. It's also, the entire site, including the area north of Disk Drive, has experienced a long history of disturbance. That includes the original homestead, there are lay-down yards, there's an abandoned rail corridor, and even a helipad at one point. So these areas have experienced quite a bit of disturbance and also a lack of management for several decades now, and that's allowed invasive species to encroach on sensitive habitat in those areas. And so the work that we will be doing in those areas, that gives us an opportunity to actually improve the quality of the habitat on the site. So we'll be, we'll be focusing on creating a really diverse habitat that can support even more wildlife than might be using the site now, which those are probably more generalist types of wildlife that can kind of adapt to any sort of situations, maybe non-native species, disturbance. So what we're trying to attract is additional wildlife that are more specialists and have evolved to, have evolved to depend on the native plant community that should be at the site. So we'll be, we'll be focusing on that with the design plans.
Okay, and then before you sit down, this is not my second question, this is an extension of the first, Mayor.
You go.
Okay, don't stop me. So there is a comment made earlier by a citizen about animals going to be poisoned or buried with the grading. What is your plan for the animals that are currently living in that habitat? I think in one of the reports, I saw some, maybe some great horned owl nests in the 2001 report, in addition to prairie dogs in this area, so help us all understand what that path is gonna look like.
Yeah, definitely. So there were baseline wildlife studies, several of them done on the site. There are planned to be additional wildlife studies so that they are up to date and we have the most current knowledge of what is currently going on at the site. And some of those reports actually recommended setbacks for any active nest sites, so that will be acknowledged and planned into the development as needed. And then the, the other part of that is that a lot of the wildlife that's currently using the site, they're fairly mobile, and so because the site is going to be, is not going to be developed all at one time, there's going to be opportunities for the wildlife to relocate to areas that are a little bit more amenable to, to them while the development is occurring. And then, once the development is finished, it will be really amazing wildlife habitat that will, they'll be happy to go back to, so, yeah.
Okay, so I'm gonna pivot to my second question, which is regarding transportation, so unless you wanna answer that, you can sit down. I prefaced this at the last meeting, and so I wanna bring it up again, I'm, I'm hoping to have a discussion, but I'd like to have some questions answered first. In the northwest corner, the park has a trail that leads to Campus Drive, and it's located between a figure-eight roundabout and then a roundabout on the west side as well. This is, people say monarch, and I feel like sometimes they just are thinking of high school, but it's actually, there's a K-38 campus and also a high school there. And in our transportation master plan, it talks about safe passage to school, and I'm thinking not only for our Louisville kiddos, but the Superior kiddos go that way to get to school as well, ride their bikes up the hill. There's a new sidewalk that Superior put in over 36 a little while ago, so I, I'd like to learn more. I know last time, Director Zakharov, you, you, you know, helped me to maybe vision what the crosswalk could look like, but I'm still not satisfied with the crosswalk there with those kiddos and all those complicated car paths. So I'd like to learn more about the underpass on the west side, and if there's any way that that could be connected to go under Campus Drive while still accomplishing the goals of drainage as well. I think that was one of the reasons you stated before as to why these underpasses are being placed where they are.
Yeah, and I, maybe if I could pull up an image, I'd definitely defer to the applicant to speak to this as well, but it might be helpful to see what you're talking about, if we could go to the click share. So here, here you can see the underpass that goes under Campus Drive, and what you're referring to, as we were working with the applicant, was what's, what's the best route to get to school from Superior? And that was the purpose of this trail connection here, and we talked a lot about what's the proper connection here, how far away does it need to be from the roundabouts? Would it be a raised crossing? Would there be beacons or lights? What could we put there? And so I don't know the, the latest plan, so I'm gonna see if the applicant has any information on the actual infrastructure intended for that crossing.
Thank you for the question. Ryan Amos, Sterling Bay. So for the underpasses, we're, we're really focusing on a lot of lighting, and also a multifaceted use for the underpasses, so we'll, we'll also have pathways going through the underpasses as well as lights, lighting through the underpass, so there, there's really no safety concern, as well as it's a double-bayed underpass that'll also have drainage to facilitate as well. Really focusing on getting to Campus Drive and maintaining all of those trail, trail pathways.
Yeah, no, I, I certainly appreciate the precautions taken to make the, the underpass as it stands safe. My concern is, I mean, this is Ward Three, I, when I look, this is my ward, we've already had quite a few challenges as it relates to kids going to school and getting injured and their families, and so I see this as a prime opportunity to take advantage of construction going on right now, to make sure that we don't have another intersection where kids don't wait and they cross and they get hurt. So I, I'm curious, is it possible for that, it's easy for me to look at the drawing and be like, well, you just kinda move it, right? And just, it looks like it's right on the, the east edge of the BVSD property there, like, is this set in stone, or could it be evaluated that there might be a better way to get these kids to school safe? And especially if there's a park across the street? They're, you know, mom and dad are finishing up their workday, they're gonna wanna run across the street and go play in the park till mom and dad pick them up. I just, I lose sleep at night over this underpass.
Sure, and I, I think that really we, we'll work with Mr. Zakharov to kind of analyze that and make sure that it's, it's the best fit for, for safety. Definitely take, take your concerns as a paramount for us. And I, I do think that there, there's definitely more analysis that we could do on it. I think the, the current edition that we, we show probably has done most of that analysis, but I'm not saying it's, it's 100% set in stone.
Okay, that's sufficient for me right now, thank you.
Yes, Councilmember Berman.
Can the applicant just, I know the planning commission was, is a big part of, you know, why this, we're here today. Talk a little bit more about the Talk a little bit more about the drainage piece. I know it's vague, right, to the greatest extent possible, but can you sort of maybe elaborate on the comments and the responses around drainage and doing the most you can to kind of minimize that? And what restrictions there are as well, like what, you know, what needs do you have to balance?
Yeah, yeah. So Luke Murfree, landscape architect with Perkins &amp; Will. So yeah, the greatest extent possible. It's a reasonable balancing test, right? This includes both providing for the adequate drainage protections to keep it consistent with code, but also integrating the open space into the drainage, providing for the desired paths that we're creating to enable public access to all these different open space amenities. And again, I'll just note, kind of similar to what Kristin was explaining about the areas north of Disk Drive, these drainage areas have suffered badly over the past five decades from lack of management of the invasives and the noxious weeds and the Russian olives. Again, not pristine, untouched, sort of healthy habitats now. And I'll just note that in the few undisturbed areas, efforts are being made to retain those to the greatest extent possible while we meet those drainage access, open space, and other requirements associated with it.
Thanks. Question answered. Others, yeah, Councilwoman.
To actually continue on Councilwoman Hamilton's question on the open space. So if you don't, because I know you're going to, I'm going to ask you to answer this for me. So I like all the ideas of the consideration given to what's there. I like the fact that we're going to protect some of the nesting, the nests that are active and they're being found on site. A little concerned with grading companies. I saw what they did post-martial fire. The people on the ground kind of don't pay attention, so it's going to take a lot of physical presence to make sure that we protect those species that we're trying to protect. But was there thought to that area north of Disk Drive and the topography and the cohesive nature of how it is now? The way that it flows and looks? I realize there are invasive species like the Russian olives, but I'm thinking more just the land itself and where it was practical to maybe have that open space be versus even condensing more some of those buildings?
I might actually hand this back to Luke. Thanks.
Again, yes, great consideration was given to those. And it's absolutely in our best interest to try to minimize the grading impacts in those as much as possible, or the applicants, I should say. They are very much, financially speaking, they're very much incentivized to minimize the grading in these areas. Okay? So I just wanted to say that. But ultimately, as Rob kind of mentioned in his presentation two weeks ago, these grading extents are very much determined by the required elevations for the stormwater infrastructure, for the roads, for the future building pads, even factoring in our efforts to condense the development as much to the center as possible. But the infrastructure is also creating those ADA accessible paths that I mentioned to provide the public access to these open space amenities like that nature preserve in this area in particular. We're using the grading as an opportunity, like Kristin was mentioning, to create a newer, high-quality habitat full of native plant communities. And again, the few native mature trees that are in appropriate locations in these zones are the main valuable landscape components in these areas. And we are already making concessions in the grading plans to keep those intact.
Thank you for the answer. I think what I was talking more about was the amount of that space and where it's located versus not putting a building in the piece that is Broomfield County and taking that, like, dedicated space and having it be to the north side of the Louisville Red Tail Ridge piece of the land. Is there, were there advantages? Or were you able to look at seeing that a larger plot of open space altogether versus spaces that are spread out and separated by large buildings and lots of buildings and roads would have been a more useful, friendly place for people as well as animals?
Would you mind clarifying which spaces you feel like are more spread out?
I was thinking, and I understand now the easement piece with Campus Drive, that that's more of a negotiated agreement with Boulder County, and thank you because I didn't know that before today, that that's why that piece of space is up there. It's more of an easement for Paradise Lane. I was thinking, there are some areas that are going to be split up by the new road that's running north-south through the development, so there wouldn't be like a continued open space. I think we have to go under, I think there is an underpass there, if I remember correctly right, that allows us to get to the open space in the northeast corner from...
Get this up on screen.
I guess what I'm getting at is, there's been a lot of conversation tonight, a lot of comments from concerned residents. People have been reviewing this for years on where the dedicated land for Louisville is located in a, what feels like a bigger, like, larger cohesive piece versus, there's, you have a lot of nice green spaces in between the buildings based on the plans. So could there be less green space in between the plans and more of it altogether toward the north side of our property? Or your property?
Yeah, and if we could possibly get what's shown here on the laptop up on screen. I think this also relates back to the comments about where the open space is and where it was previously in previous applications. And what we heard from the Open Space Advisory Board was that this northwest corner here was one of the most valuable assets. And so that's where the open space was dedicated. In addition, over here, the existing retention pond, again, it's not in the best state, and so it needs, it needs help to get it to where it should be ecologically. But the location of this was also a prime goal in hearing from those boards. And so those two areas linked together here by a trail network in a cohesive way while still accomplishing Campus Drive coming through, we feel like this was marrying kind of the best of both intentions. So they are linked together with the trail network with the two underpasses, so they are connected, and providing that buffer to Paradise Lane. It also focuses the open space, you know, the most proximate to Louisville as opposed to Broomfield. So in terms of the amount and quantity, locating it to the north as much as possible while focusing on those key areas that were important to the advisory boards.
And if I remember correctly, from two weeks ago in your presentation, you were mentioning that within each of the lots, that today, that's what the subdivision conversation is about, you were looking at kind of pulling those buildings. So I'm looking at the white piece that's, I think it's Plot Four. It's right up against the open space in the northwest corner, like, right up in there. I saw in the plans, like, the projected building sizes, that they would be pulled more to the south, closer to that street, leaving behind the buildings, not necessarily dedicated, but just not built on right to the very edge of that. Am I still understanding that correctly? And that's the intention?
Yes, yeah. And what's not shown necessarily on this plan, as you know, is the required open space as part of the individual PUDs. And so that will make this much more robust and make that open space network, again, publicly accessible, and that trail network that much more impactful.
And if I could just add to that, you know, this dark green zone here is a prime example of a community benefit of the additional 30%, you know, minimum open space per each PUD as we develop it. This, while this is part of the PUD, it's actually part of the current preliminary plat submission, and it will be part of the stormwater infrastructure with everything else that you see in the preliminary plat. And so this is Nature Preserve 2.0. If this is the main one that we've been publicizing, this is its cousin. And it's being designed in a very similar manner as the one right across Sorrel Avenue. And so, you know, that's going to be a major community benefit. And yes, like Sarah said, and like you mentioned, buildings are getting squeezed as close to the interior as possible so that we can, with that PUD open space requirement, we can piggyback on and create more contiguous land that the community will enjoy, can enjoy, and have access to. Trails literally run, as you can see here, through each of the PUDs. There is no fencing. There's just minimal markers, just to kind of note maintenance zones. But it's all very connected, very accessible to the public.
Thank you for the clarification. And I wanted to point out where you guys are showing some of these trails, also to just emphasize Councilwoman Hamilton's points of children will take the path of least resistance. I would watch them. I see them all the time on 88th coming to and from school. And they navigate the intersection, the campus and 88th, in a way that makes me very nervous. So I don't even know if I do 20 through there, to be honest with you. So that's just something to keep in mind when we're looking at, and I think that she was mentioning, if there's a way to make the underpass so that it goes basically from the K-8 school versus the high school so that the kids will run from their school and run underneath, and then, because this is literally what they do. And then they'll run through the park and go to the east sidewalk and then go home. It, again, it's impacting Superior kids, but all kids are our kids. So I thought I would emphasize that point since you have the map up to kind of visualize where that location is. Thank you for the answers. I appreciate it.
Other questions? Other questions? Okay. I have some questions. And this is a question, I think, for Directors Zakaro. There was a discussion, and I believe it was Ms. Krantz, that was, mentioned the term vested rights. We've used a variety of different terms here tonight. Buy right and so forth. I think I wanted to get a little bit of clarification from you or the city attorney, if it had to, you're looking over at the city attorney, aren't you? Yes. As I understand it, the applicant is, you know, relying on rights created and set forth in the ConocoPhillips GDP. I'm okay as far as that goes, right? And the question is, do we, there are a bunch of uses by right under that GDP, right? Is that correct?
Yeah.
And none, as I understand it, none of the uses that are being proposed here are outside the scope of that GDP. Is that right?
That's correct.
Okay. The term vested rights scares people. Tell us a little bit, if you would, whether we need to worry about, or to what extent we need to worry about that here.
Sure. So there are two types of vested property rights. There are common law vested property rights. There are statutory vested property rights. The statutory vested property rights, the city adopted an ordinance back in 1999 to codify for the city what comprises a site-specific development plan to which property rights may vest under the city's municipal code. That is a process that the applicant has to apply for. It's a special notice. It's part of the public hearing process. But that process was not undertaken by the ConocoPhillips applicant, to my understanding. It has not been undertaken by this applicant. So there are no vested property rights under the city's municipal code with regard to this property. And, you know, I did not work on the GDP agreement, but I think that when it says there are no vested property rights, it's just acknowledging that what was being approved did not go through the city's process to create a vested property right with respect to that GDP or the GDP agreement, because you can have vested property rights under a development agreement under the city's code. So it does not affect what are the uses by right under the GDP. And I know that people get confused with those terms, but it's Chapter 17.54 in Louisville's code, if anybody watching or listening is interested in reading more about what is a vested property right within the city of Louisville.
I think one of the things that's come up is when the referendum passed and we sort of reverted, I'm probably using the wrong legal term there, but reverted to the old ConocoPhillips GDP plan. There were certain rights that the property owner then and now has under that that they can rest on that aren't going to be something that we can change in the way that we were changing them under the GDP, right? The GDP amendment that we were looking at in 2020.
Sure. I would love the opportunity to explain that.
Please do.
So the GDP, the ConocoPhillips GDP is the zoning of the property. The GDP amendment would have changed the zoning of the property. That was approved by the city council by ordinance. Ordinances do not become effective until 30 days after publication. During that 30-day time period is when a referendum petition may be filed. And that was done in this case. The filing of the referendum petition suspended the ordinance that was adopted by the city council. Ultimately, at the election, that ordinance was turned down by the voters. It never became effective. So what you have, there wasn't a reverting back. There wasn't an overturning of the city council's decision. It's the underlying zoning of the ConocoPhillips GDP was always there. And when the amendment didn't become effective, that left the original zoning on the property, or I should say the current zoning, because the GDP in and of itself was a rezoning at one point.
Thank you. That's very helpful. And a lot more accurate than the way I described it, so I appreciate it.
It's confusing.
No. It is in a certain way, and it is in another. But I appreciate your clarifying it, so it actually is a lot simpler. Next question is for, and some of these are just to sort of lay a little bit of groundwork for our next discussion, part of the discussion. But there was discussion in the packet and in council, or in the public comments about the rejection of the application by the Planning Commission on a three-to-two vote. And it, on the face of it, seems odd that it should come to us even over the rejection by the Planning Commission. So my question is, why, how did that, just if you could summarize really briefly?
Right. So with our land use processes, Planning Commission is a recommending body. And so things can advance to city council with a recommendation, and then council's the final say.
Right. And, but the, you approved or have recommended passage of the current resolution that's before us, right?
Yeah, so staff does look independently at the criteria. And in our analysis, you know, we have recommended findings for councils. know, we have recommended findings for councils, so we felt that it did meet the criteria in our analysis.
Okay. So, I mean, you disagreed with Planning Commission, essentially. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay. I mean, there have been changes, and that's the, because all of this has happened over such a long period of time, there have been changes to the application since the time that it originally was with the...
There's been a lot of changes to several different iterations of the application. Since the Planning Commission hearing on this plat, the only thing that I understand that has changed substantively is the addition of private roads. Otherwise, I believe it's substantially the same application.
Okay. Good. Thank you. One question that was raised by Mr. Eisenstein, I think, had to do with roundabouts at 88th and Campus. It's just a minor thing, but is that, can somebody from either you, Director, or somebody from the applicant explain what the plan is there?
Right. So that's just to maintain, be maintained as a signalized intersection at 88th and Campus. That public comment, there was a mention to the comprehensive plan, a reference to the comprehensive plan.
Right.
I would have to pull up the comprehensive plan and see if there's a specific proposal for a roundabout at that intersection. Again, the comprehensive plan is not a regulatory document. It has a lot of visioning-type concepts that sometimes you don't apply. I mean, when we looked at that whole street with the applicant and our engineering staff and their engineering staff, we thought about where should we maintain signals and roundabouts, what exists now. So, you know, could a roundabout go there and function? We'd have to study that and come back with a recommendation, but I don't think there's something in the city ordinances or regulations that say that this, that absolutely should be a roundabout at that location. Roundabouts can take a lot of right-of-way. There could be right-of-way constraints, especially on that little corner property that's left there. You know, I don't want to speculate, but sometimes you do need extra right-of-way to make those work.
But what you're saying is that there's nothing in the documents that regulate this particular development that would require
No.
A roundabout there. Okay. Well, that's what I wanted to find out. There's been a lot of discussion about the grading plan, and a lot of comments from the public about that, and I appreciate some of those comments have been addressed already. I guess the, maybe just to clarify, how much less grading than was originally planned is now planned for the property under this application? There's been a reduction, I think, my understanding, was there was a reduction in the amount of grading that's taking place or would take place? Is that correct?
I'm not sure. I don't know if the applicant has any confirmation on that.
I may not have understood that correctly, but...
So the initial plan, the ConocoPhillips plan, was merely a conceptual plan, whereas what we've presented now is more refined, almost in the construction world, we'll call it a schematic design, and kind of working hand-in-hand with Mr. Zakara. We've really been able to kind of refine that. But as far as percentages, I can't, I can't mention if it's a 15% reduction or a 20% reduction in grading.
The way I kind of understand this, and I guess I'd like some help on this, one of my former colleagues used to refer to themselves as the bear of little brain, so I'll take that mantle for just a moment. Help me understand, there is a lot of grading, and obviously, there's going to be disturbance of land. That's part of what's there. And there are concerns in the community about drainage, there's concerns about killing the wildlife that's there, and, you know, disturbing that forever. There's sort of a sense, and I'm going to use something that's probably a little incendiary, but, you know, that you're sort of destroying the ground in order to rebuild it into something better on the habitat that you're doing. And, you know, that always raises questions, right? I believe, based on what I heard, that that habitat that is planned is going to be an improvement over what is there for a whole bunch of reasons, not the least of which is getting rid of all of those Russian olives, which should be, which are a blight on us, and some of the non-native vegetation and so forth. But is that essentially what we're really talking about, is getting rid of, getting rid of what, or grading there in order to create the new habitat that you have in mind for the parcel?
It is. And if I may just dive into the campus drive just a little bit, the, one of the main requirements for a lot of the grading for campus drive is maintaining elevation and drainage for campus drive off of the road. And what we have to kind of solve for is the elevation from 88th to 96 and connecting those two pathways. Now, we're grading quite a lot. I mean, I'll say it right there at campus, but that is to get those elevations and maintain the drivetrain, the drive and roadways to make sure that water sheets off, we get stormwater drainage to the correct retention ponds, either to the left or the south of that, while also maintaining mile-high flood district. So there's a couple jurisdictions that we have to maintain that for.
You know, what, you heard the comments, I think, of Mr. Stalker around the amount of, the number of these very heavy precipitation events that we've gotten recently. What's, do you have any concern about the way that this property is, you know, the drainage plan that you have, when confronted with that kind of change or that kind of more frequent occurrence of such a, you know, significant precipitation events?
I don't. I do want to kind of put in perspective of how a 10-year and 100-year flood is measured. So some people kind of look at that as, oh, well, every 100 years, we'll have this type of flood. So it's actually based off of a percentage. So 1% of rainfall equals a 100-year flood. So basically, we may hit that every 100 years, but it may not necessarily happen every 100 years. It could happen twice every 10 years. But based on the percentages of that, we have to plan for that. So we are taking in that design into account, and I feel comfortable with how we've designed it currently and are meeting those requirements.
You know, this is a fairly simple question, too, but is there any way that on the grading plan that you have right now, to meet some of the concerns that have been raised in the community, that you could grade less than you've got there without noticeably or significantly adversely impacting the development that you're seeking to do on that property?
I don't believe so.
Other questions, council members? Questions for Mr. Zakara? Okay. Thank you very much. So maybe I do have one more question, not for the applicant, but I want to make sure in framing this up. First of all, I want to say thank you to the applicant, to the staff, to all of the people from the community who have spoken tonight and who have provided those comments, again, through their writing and through their discussions. And thank you to council for clarifying a lot of the issues that we're dealing with tonight. I think there is no question, this is a big decision. It's a huge parcel. I know I've, it's weighed pretty heavily on my mind for some time, and I know that that's true for the rest of probably all of you, or you wouldn't be here probably for different reasons. It's weighed heavily. But what I think, I want to make sure we do is to make sure, first of all, the standards that we're applying. We are, as I understand it, applying Section 16.12.075A. Am I correct on that, Director?
Title 16 has the subdivision regulations. Are you asking for what's specific to preliminary plats or just the criteria for approval of plats?
Preliminary plats, because that's what's at issue tonight.
So there's the content of the preliminary plat, and then there's the review criteria, which I think, yes, it's, I think we can cite those sections, but they're also outlined in the staff report, both, especially what the criteria are. So if you find the applications complete within the contents of the plat, then you can then look at the criteria for subdivisions and see if the council feels that each of the criteria are met. And I can bring up the slides that have those citations if helpful.
Would you do that, please?
Okay. So if we can switch over to the ClickShare, please. So the, these are the approval criteria broadly stated. There's three of them. They're in Section 161275. And then, so there's number one, two, and three, and then, once you get into the third one, there's a lot of sub-criteria within the code, and those are all in the staff report is probably the best way to reference those, because staff does actually have comments on each of those. So there's 160420 and other sections, so it also has to comply with the comprehensive plan as well. So there's those three. So once you get into 1620, there's 19 purpose statements that you have to show, that the applicant has to comply with. Again, those 19 statements are in the staff report. I don't have them on the slides. And then when you get into 1616, that's where we get into design standards. And so there's six different subsections of design standards, which are outlined here. So you have to find compliance with those as well.
Okay. Let's go back to the three questions that we have to be, if you want to put that up there.
Oh, I'm sorry. You wanted the...
The very first slide that you showed us.
Oh, sorry. Guess we have to go back to ClickShare.
I guess the first question is whether, whether the plat, first of all, whether the application is complete under the requirements of the title, right? That's, whether the plat conforms to all the requirements of the title. And you've obviously recommended and demonstrated, at least in the staff report, that you believe that it has, correct?
That's staff's recommendation, yes.
And I guess what we ought to start with is probably that question. So, council, do you have thoughts about that? Councilmember Hamilton?
So what I'm looking at here is staff conditionally finds, right, the application to be in conformance with all requirements of Title 16.
Yes, we do have two recommended conditions. That's correct.
Okay. So I just want to make sure we highlight those. And those, the two that I have noted are the Northwest Parkway Authority, clarification on that, and then also Public Works had some comments they needed to resolve. Is that still the case, Director Power?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay.
And those are outstanding still. Those conditions are still recommended.
And those are, those are already in the very last part of the resolution that we have drafted in front of us tonight, those two conditions. Other comments about whether the plat conforms to all of the requirements of the title? Yes, Mayor Protom.
Yeah. I kind of have this, I've been in council for a little while, but before I was on council, trying to understand kind of the role in this situation, Mayor, you talked about like our legislative role versus our quasi-dedicial role. In these moments, you know, I think what's really important to have these public meetings to kind of see what staff is doing, what the applicant's doing, like all these pieces, and it all comes up into the public's view now, right? And they don't like it when I say this, but I think of staff as being like the computer. So you're going to put in all the information, the computer's going to spit out an answer, like, well, based on all the data and all the information and all of our rules, all of our expert analysis, here's the answer. And then it's our job to be the humans in the room and check those answers and see if there's something off, if there's something wrong. And we ask a lot of questions, you've seen, trying to understand how those decisions were made and make sure the public understands how those decisions were made. Often, not just preliminary plat, but often these decisions come with exceptions, exemptions, requests for, you know, some sort of allowance. I'm not, help me understand, like, is there, is there, is there a single request for us to allow something that's outside of the Lewisville Municipal Code, the comprehensive plan, the GDP, or this plat review? Is there something that is like, yeah, that doesn't really follow the rules, computer has to say no, but we can allow for that allowance? Like, you would think, obviously, like a height allowance, like, you can't say yes to 150 feet, but we could, sort of thing? Is there something that they're asking us to bend or change or approve that's not within those four?
Right. Yeah. So, yeah, there is no request for any waivers from the code. You can do waivers, certain waivers with subdivision plats. There's no request for waivers from the subdivision standards or the zoning standards within the application.
Okay. Because what I feel, we can go, there's a lot of details here. I don't find in here, and again, I want to go back to the Planning Commission, because they found six reasons. I know it was 2-2 for a while, and it was eventually 3-2, and, you know, these were the six reasons for denial from those three people. We've talked about the traffic. We've talked about the block length. We've talked about the public versus private roads. We've talked about the grading and a feeling that it was being overgraded. My understanding from the applicant and staff is being graded to the least amount possible, but there are roads, there are trails, like Coal Creek Trail was graded. To have a trail going along Coal Creek, I can imagine right now for like, hey, we're going to bring machines in, and we're going to flatten, like, we, so. I know there's some grading that sounds bad, but it's necessary to get a bike path. There's a lot of grading, it sounds, necessary to get campus dry, which we all... There's a lot of grading, it sounds, necessary to get campus dry, which we all want, and grading's expensive and moving dirt's expensive, and you guys are going to grade as little as possible, but there's a lot of grading. But I don't find that as, again, to the extent possible, I don't see them grading things they don't need to grade for no reason. I see reasons behind all the grading. The Northwest Parkway letter, that was an issue, planning commission, I think, was right to say, hey, without, without that easement, or not easement, right away, we have a problem here, right? And so, we've got that in the condition. And then, the, and then the location of open space and quantity of open space and thought with wildlife, I don't think there's any better location than the northwest corner and around those two ponds. So, I think if I had to handpick where the open space goes, I like where it is, it's to the northwest, it's to the north, it's around the ponds, that's what we've heard from a lot of people that have come here. They, a lot of people want all the way to just drive, obviously, that's quantity, not area, right? So, I like the area, and the quantity is, is what, something like four times? I know 12% is required, and we're at maybe 36%, depending on, 36 to 50%, depending on what you count, broomfield, otherwise, but like, at least triple the requirement of, so I think the quantity is fine, and I think the location is exactly where I want it. So, those are the six issues from planning commission, and I think those six issues are either dealt with or need to be dealt with by final. And so, otherwise, I find it, it conforms to the requirements of this title, I find that, we can go through each one, Mayor, I don't need to skip ahead, but that's, I'm probably not going to speak much more, because I, I think I'm going to say the same thing with each one, is that I have looked at all of these against our comprehensive plan, the GDP, the code, and the rules of the plat, and I'm satisfied with staff's interpretation of that, and I'm satisfied with the addressing of the planning commission's denial. So, I think there's more to talk about, about resident desires and resident things, but I think when it comes to like the black and white, I'm pretty happy, and there's, and this is just a preliminary plat. We will be back here for another conversation for the final plat, that'll be more dialed in with the, especially with the, sorry, the subdivision improvement agreement is going to be a meaty document that will take a bet, a lot of our time on the final, if we get there. So, I'm, if something else comes up, I'll speak more, but I'm, I'm probably done.
Yeah, I want to go back, thank you for that. You, you worked through several different pieces of this at once, I want to go back to the first. I, I think that on whether the plat conforms to all requirements of this title, I think the, for the reasons stated in the staff report, I believe that that's been met. And I guess I want to know whether anybody else in council disagrees or has any comment on that. The discussion of that, for whatever it's worth, is on page 321 of the packet. But I wanted to find out first, it's the 16th page of the, of the February 6th staff report. Is there anyone who disagrees about that? Yes, Councilmember Hamilton?
It's more of a question upfront. So, does what we're talking about right now include, for example, there was A through S, I think? Is that encompassed under what we're talking about?
I think that is...
Or are we going to talk about that later?
Next.
That's three.
That's the third.
Okay. I'm good then.
You're good?
Yep.
Okay. So, let's move to the second piece of that, is whether the approval of plat will be consistent with city's comp plan, applicable zoning requirements, and other applicable federal, state, and city laws. Excuse me. And there are a variety of criteria here, not, not all of which are ones that are probably going to be in dispute, but some of them, I think, were, plenty of them were discussed by different people in the public and otherwise. I guess one question that I have is under do you have, does council disagree or agree with the staff report as to whether approval of plat will be consistent with the comp plan, applicable zoning requirements, and other applicable federal, state, and city laws? Yes, go ahead, Mayor Protam. Oh. Any other thoughts? Okay. Councilmember Bierman?
No, I mean, I think on the surface, it meets it, I don't see any, I don't have any issues.
For the reasons stated in the staff report, the application does, is consistent with city's comp plan, applicable zoning requirements, and other applicable federal, state, and city laws. The last question is one that is broken down in more detail, and that we can, we probably ought to, I know I have some questions about this one, and would be good to have some discussion about it. Whether the proposed subdivision will promote the purposes set forth in 16.04.020 of this, the municipal code, and comply to the standards set forward, or set forth in Chapter 16.16 of the code. The chap, excuse me, the criteria that are in, set forth in Section 160420 were listed on page 18 through page 20, 18 through 22 of the staff report. And staff has discussed each one of those in the packet. Are there comments that folks want to raise about any of those particular sections, those criteria? Yes, go ahead, Councilmember Hamilton.
Sure, I'm happy to start. So, walking into this meeting today, the majority of my concerns were around the drainage, the preservation of as much nature as possible, and traffic. I found the answers and the approach to the open space selection, to the drainage, and the cautions around that adequate at this point in time. I still have concerns about and want to make sure with the, the traffic. I know there's discussion that, you know, there's an IGA in the works with Northwest Parkway. I also would, would like to have it on paper that the expired agreement with BVSD needs to be done before this can go to final. And since those large construction projects are dependent on coordination with those bodies, I think it's reasonable to ask that grading not start, and disruptions not start, until those have been given the green light. The other thing with traffic, again, is this underpass that, I'm saying underpass because to me, that's the ideal solution for the monarch kids and those who will be traveling back and forth. I would love to see, given, you know, some of the requirements, K, for example, is safe and efficient circulation of traffic, they talk about pedestrians and bikeways. What I neglected to mention earlier is that the, there's a public land dedication in that upper northwest corner for police or fire. So, you add that into the roundabouts, and kids going to school and everything else, and I think it's not safe at some point in the near future. So, that's something else that I think warrants further discussion and is unresolved for me as far as what direction the council will go in on that as well.
I, I agree with, with you on all of, all of what you've said. The one question that I have, though, is currently, the grading is allowed. I mean, this is, it's an open question for, for staff. My understanding is the grading is, could, could occur at any time after approval of the preliminary. I don't know whether there's any way we can, you know, I suppose one way of doing it is to say, you know, everything else equal, we could support the plan as long as there's a holding off of, of grading by the applicant until after final plat. But I don't know whether that is even something we can request, so.
Well, so it's in the zoning agreement.
The director and these, just, just on, on the, on the record, the city attorney and the director keep pointing at one another, and I'm not really sure.
Yeah, well, I'm always happy to step in it and have her correct me, so we'll start there.
Very good.
So, I haven't read the, that section of the agreement, we could certainly bring that up and read it. I'd have to take this down off my screen, and we can read it, I know this, maybe the city attorney could bring it up, or we can bring this section up. I, I think it's in the agreement, I can't remember the terms or the language exactly, I just know that there is some right to, that was provided in that agreement, to start grading before the final approval. Again, I don't remember the exact language. I, I understand there's a concern, potentially, about certain parts of the application. So, I think if, if you're concerned that it doesn't meet one of the criteria because they start grading, I think that could be a question that there could be some deliberation or some discussion with the applicant about whether that may or may not comply with a certain criteria, or how that could help it comply with the criteria. But typically, no, if it's in the agreement, you wouldn't renegotiate the agreement. So, I would also say that as well. So, now that I've gone all the way around, I was trying to buy time for the city attorney.
Okay, well, thank you. I do not have that agreement with me, so. But generally speaking, if the applicant has a right in the agreement, we would need to amend that agreement in the same form. So, the resolution approving the final plat wouldn't serve to amend that agreement. The applicant has to agree, we would need to draft that, it would be, it would be a written amendment to that agreement, if that makes sense. It's...
So, would you...
So, two parties made an agreement, and you can't have one party unilaterally changing that agreement through a land use approval process, because that agreement does exist, it attaches to the land.
And is Director Zaccaro saying unless it is not following
Right.
our code here?
If you find, under the criteria, that notwithstanding their contractual right to early grading, that early grading wouldn't meet a criteria, that is something for the council to deliberate on. What I'm saying is that there's the contract, and we would need to address that in a contractual form, not through a resolution approving a preliminary plat.
Got it.
Can, are we allowed to ask applicant if they intend to grade early?
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think I understand what you're suggesting. I mean, we could make a finding that essentially the agreement is insufficient because it doesn't adequately meet the criteria that we, one of the criteria that we have. And, or are you saying we have to, regardless, we're going to have to get an amendment to that contract?
What I'm saying is that if you were to find that a criteria of preliminary plat approval is not met because of early grading, you would need to deal with the fact that they have a contractual right to do that in making that finding.
One, one moment. Well, yeah, when, when the applicant was ready to have a word, so maybe we ought to find out that word is, because maybe we can cut right through this.
Yeah, Rod Richardson with Sterling Bay. I, I don't know what our rights are under the grading after preliminary, before or final. You know, we're more than happy, you know, we have no intentions of going out there and grading tomorrow. You know, we're more than happy to, you know, I guess, a verbal agreement that we will not, you know, grade for the, you know, we don't want to commit to forever, but for the next four months, which we, we think should be more than sufficient to get through final, that, that we will not grade between now and then.
Appreciate that. Mr. Painter, do you have knowledge of this particular agreement that we're talking about? Fair, fair enough, a wise answer, if you. Clearly, we can't rely on, I mean, appreciate the applicant's willingness to do that, but we would still need, and, and I don't know, assuming that the other criteria are met, I'm just trying to address Councilmember Hamilton's concerns. Would a condition be that we would need to have an amended, an agreement that is amended such that it, the grading won't occur for a period of time, four months or otherwise?
Right, so remember that any condition of approval has to relate back to a criteria.
Yeah.
So, making it a condition of approval
Understood.
brings you right back to the point of needing to address the contractual right in evaluation of whether the criteria are met.
I will put that back on Councilmember Hamilton's plate for just a moment. If there is a criteria, I think there are a number of them that probably are candidates.
Yeah, I mean, the one that I'm looking at, that I think, in my opinion, is most applicable here is, is N, as in Nancy, to preserve and enhance to the extent possible, the natural beauty topography, yada, 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 and starting grading when possibly it may not be needed, or it may need to look differently based on these transportation concerns. I think N, in my opinion, and I'm curious what my council members think, is sufficient to then ask that the grading be held off until the final plat is approved.
I think I would add probably S to that, which is to otherwise plan for and regulate the use of land so as to provide planned and orderly use of land and protection of the environment in a manner of consistent with constitutional rights. So, that, that's something that we can, we can think about and just, are there other concerns that you wanted to raise about those criteria in 16, particularly the 1604 criteria?
Those were my main ones, and just to reiterate, the first one is to make sure there's approval and agreement between Northwest Parkway and BVSD, because it's outdated. To have better, under K, as far as criteria goes, making sure there's safe passage for children. And with those put together, I think S and N supports that grading not happen right immediately after approval of the preliminary plat.
I, I agree with that. How about the rest of council?
I definitely agree with the BVSD and the Northwest Parkway. I would suggest that they get longer expiration on the agreements. The resolution was good for a year, so I'd make it longer, so you don't have to keep going back to the drawing board, would be my recommendation on any kind of resolutions. And, yeah, I agree with the grading. One comment I was going to make around the grading is, could we specify, you know, campus drive is so critically important to this, you know, would we allow them, if there's, because there's going to be support for it, if we allow grading upon approval, could we specify, hey, you can only grade, you know, campus drive, because I think that's going to be an integral part of this whole development? But I'm, I don't feel strongly that we have to allow for grading. But I'm, I don't feel strongly that we have to allow for grading, even though they have a right to it.
I think the amount of time that we're going to give them is another question if we approve, but let's, maybe when we get closer, we, we need to go through some of the other criteria. One of the big concerns that folks also mentioned was traffic, so. And I guess I have a, I have a couple of questions and a couple of concerns. That has to do with looking back at the access or at the criteria. Excuse me. Pardon me. Okay, yeah, you're right. Yeah, the, the criteria that's most implicated there is K, which is to provide for the safe and efficient circulation of traffic throughout the city, the avoidance of congestion in streets and highways and along pedestrian and bikeways. To some extent, we're still, you know, obviously waiting on the Northwest Parkway to help, to clarify that. But my understanding is that there's agreement as to the type of, or the type and who's going to pay for the interchange, well, it's something interchange, what is it, the gateway to that property, between the property and Northwest Parkway? Is that how we describe that particular? The main source of disagreement, as I understood it, between Northwest Parkway and the developer is, has to do with Campus Drive intersection, right? Is that right?
So there, there's consideration about the Campus Drive intersection, Northwest Parkway and 96th intersection, as well as improvements along the length of Northwest Parkway going south, is my understanding. So all, there's improvements being considered and right-of-way considerations through all of those segments.
And we've heard tonight, I mean, the evidence that, that we've had presented to us is that those are essentially resolved, except for getting the document.
So I, so I think there's continuing discussions. I think as a condition, that gives the opportunity then to finalize those agreements. I wouldn't suggest anything's finalized at this point.
Okay. Fair enough. There are a lot of, of additional trips, and we've talked about this, I expressed this concern about the old plan. Learned a little bit more about the, the way that this plan purports or proposes to handle the traffic, and I'm comforted somewhat by the fact that most of the, most of those trips, as I understand it, 75% of the, the trips are going to be between that or on that area between Campus Drive and 36. Is that correct? Am I, do I have that right, that most of the trips that are going to be added as a result of this, as, as a result of the buildout of this, of this plan, will, will, will be in that, in that corridor as opposed to north and going into Louisville?
So the traffic study has some assumptions that are, you know, based on, I'd say, the traffic engineer's opinion about that, probably based on existing traffic patterns and the uses within the development. And so there's percentages assigned to each of the roadways. I could bring that graphic up, it's probably a better way to answer your question. Sorry to keep doing that, but I don't.
No, it's a better thing to do.
Forty-five percent comes from US 36 to the east.
Not seventy-five, forty-five.
So if you change to, if we could change to the click share again, I have the graphic up. You can see all the percentages from the different directions. Again, this is just an, an estimate, kind of a best guess.
Okay.
Yes.
And I just want to add too, if you look in the top left, there's 15% going to West US 36, so that is 60%. And then plus the Northwest Parkway is another 15%, go up a little bit, Rob. So that's the 75% that are going to regional infrastructure.
Got you. All right, other questions, concerns about traffic? Yes, Councilmember Hamilton.
So we've talked a lot about the Northwest Parkway area, but not the 36, CDOT conversation, and that part failing sooner rather than later. Is it CDOT? I could have, 36, whatever it is. So, and if I remember correctly, unless anything's changed, there were, you know, specific improvements suggested, but it's hard to understand future plans, to commit to anything, so how do we, how do we get some, some commitment to that part of the traffic?
I'm not quite sure I'm following what you mean.
Maybe Mayor Proton can.
Yeah, I think the conversation we had two weeks ago was, the Broomfield development to the east has created a ton of traffic on that road, and obviously the mall and everything on the other side, and no one's, no, no other entity has pitched into that solution, and a solution needs to come for all of the municipalities around there. So 470 needs a solution, CDOT needs a solution, Broomfield does, Louisville does, we all need to solve that failing overpass intersection over 36. And I don't know the details of what amount of the 25 million potentially go towards that intersection, but my understanding is, we'll hear some here, but it's just complicated because they can't do the improvements there, and we could require them to put funds there, but no other development around that intersection has had to provide funds for that intersection.
Right. Mr. Painter?
A, a little bit of light I might shed on that. That intersection area, we understand Dr. Cog, CDOT, Broomfield, other authorities, maybe the feds too. It's not totally clear, there is a study going on about that intersection, it's a long process. There's a lot of complication involving the Jefferson Parkway, which was identified as going on farther, whether that is dead now because Broomfield has pulled out. But that's a process that's going on kind of by itself. We aren't invited to that process. We haven't been asked to participate in it. And in particular, the demands that we had from the Northwest Parkway in terms of what they wanted to see us do, had nothing to do with that, other than the extension of the third lane down to that area. So that's not, that's not something we've been asked to be involved in. And it would, I, I don't know how we could wedge our way into it at this point either.
Does that help, or does that cloud your?
I mean, kind of. It's like, it's complicated, is the answer, but it's still, I feel like we're going to contribute this development to, further to the problem. So if we can't solve it now, how do we get some investment or some commitment that when it does happen, we are ready to be a team player?
Yeah, and I think the answer to that is that, one, it's not part of this application. We can't deal with it within this application, and we're making, we probably would be making a lot of speculative, I mean, we'd just be based on speculation about how that was going to resolve itself. I think everybody, it would be in everybody's interest, right, to resolve the question, the questions that have been raised, what's being studied right now, involving CDOT and the feds and all the municipalities. All of that stuff is something that, after all of this, we would most certainly want to be a part of, and we would want a solution to, but I'm not sure that that alone is, I mean, I'm not sure we're going to get a solution to that tonight. And we're not, you know, I, I'm not sure whether any commitment that we make, except stating it from the dais, is going to have any, any bearing on those discussions. I agree, they're, they're important, but I'm not sure we can do anything about that in connection with this application. Does that make sense?
Kind of, so help me understand how that's different than Northwest Parkway being a challenge in making sure the traffic flows there.
I think our city attorney would like to answer that question.
With Northwest Parkway, there are right-of-way dedications that are required, and that is a big part of the discussion with Northwest Parkway. So you don't have the same right-of-way requirements to construct infrastructure to Highway 36.
Okay, that helps, thank you.
Other comments? Concerns? Thoughts? Yep, are there other questions that people, I, I raised traffic. We haven't yet talked about open space. And that certainly was, I mean, it's a, the. As, as I understand it, we certainly have far more open space that is being dedicated under this application than is required. The question is, and I think Mr. Jones put it correctly, that under, under our ordinances, we can request additional open space dedication. We can go to that ordinance, if you like, but I guess I wanted to find out what, what concerns people have about that, if at all, because there may not be any interest in, in talking about additional, any additional dedication of open space than what's already been proposed. Any interest?
So, I don't want to call him across as greedy, just preface, but I, I do want to be able to be a voice for a lot of residents when I say this. The land dedication is more than is required by our code, and that is good. The appearance of more dedicated land coming from unincorporated Boulder County and Broomfield gives the appearance that there is this mass amount of dedicated land. I would say that to a lot of the residents of Louisville, they recognize that is not Louisville dedicated, that, that is not what the residents consider to be part of Red Tail Ridge and the undeveloped land. Even though the land has been commercial, we have had businesses on it, there has been a substantial part of that property for the last, I was going to say like 60 years, but it's, I mean, 80 years, whatever, prior to Storage Tech even, that never had anything on it. And a lot of residents really look at it and say, the footprint of Storage Tech, which is, I think also what ConocoPhillips was talking about staying within, was the footprint of the Storage Tech facility on the ground. The land that has been not usable by residents ever, it has just felt open, is the concern. And I, I just wanted to make sure that I'm able to voice this concern, that it is appreciated, this is a large percentage when you include non-Lewisville property in this Red Tail Ridge dedication. And I think the clustering, the conversation around clustering buildings as possible, is taking some of the, like, lovely green spaces that the people who work in this, this new proposed development will get to utilize, the cool equipment in and around buildings where they get out and walk. That takes away from what will feel like the residents kind of not having that physical appearance of that land just being open, whether they can use it or not. Hence the question I asked before about the placement of buildings on places that get pulled back, so it's just undeveloped behind them, between those buildings and the open spaces. So I, this, I, when we talk about the open space and the dedication and the concerns of it, it isn't just that it's where there's going to be trails that people get to use, it's the feeling that there isn't a building on that land. And that lovely big piece of property in Broomfield that you guys are proposing is an awesome dog park. I think that a lot of the residents of Louisville, that's great for the people who live in the condos in Broomfield, but what about for Louisville residents and the Louisville Red Tail Ridge piece? I wanted to just put that out there for you to really hear. I know you heard everything that they're saying, but it's the, it's the, it's how a space feels. And I genuinely appreciate the effort that is made from a developer to make this lovely, more native, if you will. Having, having lived through a wildfire, that we feel a large component of this was because we had unmitigated wild spa, wild land, grasslands, and it's a huge concern for this community that we mitigate those spaces. It sounds like that's something that you're going to be doing in this open space, is mitigating against fire. That's, that's very meaningful to the residents. If you saw it in your hearts to move a couple buildings in that Lot 4 or Lot 3, a little bit farther south, I think that you'd find that there's a lot bigger hearts going out there towards Sterling Bay, to be honest with you. That's my piece of it. I, I don't know that it doesn't meet the code, so I have a hard time saying, saying that it doesn't meet the code. It doesn't meet the spirit of what a lot of the people who live here are asking you to listen to with them, so, thank you.
Thanks. Yeah, Mayor Proton?
Yeah, I think it's difficult. I appreciate your comments. I think, you know, we have a rule that says 12%, if you came with 10%, you can just see your way out. Come with 12%, I think there's a lot of conversation about, well, hold on, this is a pretty special lot, you're coming with the bare minimum? We, this is unacceptable, right? And so by some measure, you're coming with 50%, and then we don't want to count those, because, well, just because, we don't want to count those, so we're not going to count those, we're not going to count Broomfield, we're not going to count the place above, because we don't want to give you credit for those. But, okay, so if we don't give you credit for those, then I believe you're, you know, doing 45, well, 30% of the 309 acres. So again, 91.7 acres of open space inside that area is 30% of that area, not including the part above and not including the part below, and not including the public or private open space, and not including the open space that will come with each PUD. We're like, really getting down to the just bare minimum of what we're going to consider you're giving, and it's 30%. And the requirement's 12. So I just cannot in good conscious, conscience, look at you and say, that's not enough? Because what's, for 35, 40? Like, we have a rule, it's 12. And I think we're extracting a lot more. Extracting is not the right word, you're offering it, but maybe through this process, over the last four years, it's been extracted. But again, 194.96 total public dedicated lands, if you include Broomfield in the north. That's 50% of the 389. But you're, you're asked to have percentage of the 309, right? So it'd be 63% of 309. What are we doing? Like, I just don't, like, for me, I love open space, I want it, and you're bringing a ton, and I don't know how to ask for a ton plus a little more. So I don't disagree with, with the want, I just, as a judge on this, you've met the minimum, and you've tripled it, at least, and in the least friendly look at, of what you've brought. So I think it's, I think it's fantastic, I'm super excited. Our community, again, like Campus Drive, our community wants open space, and right now it's private, and we're about to get 130 acres of open space. now it's private, and we're about to get 130 acres of open space. That's exciting for me. That's exciting for people who are into the wildlife, into the spaces, into the beauty, into the biking and all that. I'm excited to have 139.1 acres, and it seems like one of the negative parts of this, of this plat, and I don't understand that. Like, it's 140 acres, that's exciting to me. Like, that's something that, when I'm done on council and I look back, that we got 140 acres is, is fantastic. And as far as being separated, hey, Harper Lake and Davidson Mesa are amazing, and they're separated by a major road with an underpass. Coyote Run is an awesome open space, and it's bisected by Washington, another road. So we figure out how to put these within our communities, and so roads go through them, and underpasses go, and trails go, and it's not perfect. I think it would be awesome if Campus Drive was higher, but I understand the buffering, and so you're trying to make those balances. But I think there's, I think this plan has plenty of open space, and so, you know, I'll be, I, I think that criteria has been met a lot, by a lot.
Thanks, Mayor Protem. Others about the open space piece?
I do. So I, I agree with Councilman Dickinson, Mayor Protem. I, I don't get the sense that the number, I mean, yes, we want a little bit more. I feel like the, the pushback from residents is the placement of it. And again, I'm not asking to go back to the drawing board, but again, when is enough enough, right? I agree that this is, far exceeds what our code requires, but I think the placement of it, you know, do we want to revisit that, or have the applicant revisit that? That's up for discussion. But I, I don't get the sense, the, the number, 139, 194, you know, these are big, big numbers, what is essentially private property, that they are going to grant us, and it costs us zero, right? And we just came off of, you know, and the Open Space Advisory Board has approved this, has recommended this, along with the parks. So with that in mind, I, I feel like it's an adequate number, and maybe we discuss the, you know, configuration, possibly.
Other comments? Other, other criteria that we've been looking at there in 1616 and 1604? Have any other comments? Are there other discussion points? One thing I would say is, and, and I, I agree with, ultimately with the open space dedication, I think that there has been a lot of discussion. And I'm glad that the, the applicant has had a chance to, to sort of rethink where the open space ought to be, and the fact that Open Space Advisory Board approved it means a great deal to me. I think the fact that we can get more is, is, it is a little bit troubling. One of the things in the, in the past that's happened, and I just say this as an aside, is that there's a lot of, there was a lot of horse trading from the dais in previous instances, asking the applicant for things from the dais. Our point here is to look at the criteria that we have been given, and all of the evidence that we have, and decide whether this application meets the criteria. And at least, what I'm hearing from council members, and, and I think I agree with it, is that the council is comfortable with the amount of open space dedication that has been proposed in this application. Am I hearing that correctly? Okay. All right. Are there other, other points that people want to raise concerning the criteria that we have left on the list? Yes, Councilmember Protem?
Thank you. I wanted to know if you mind if I go back to the traffic piece?
Yes.
Mayor?
Go ahead.
So I still have a concern, because the way that I understand this Director Sakaro, this preliminary plat, the, the big reason is setting the stage for the subdivision, but also the infrastructure and roads, correct?
Correct.
So if we are going to give some, any additional thought to there being a way to get to the proposed new site of Avista, other than a two-lane Dillon, which is, in my personal opinion, fraught with peril when you have people trying to get to a hospital urgently, and they're not in an ambulance, I have so much concern with that only being one way east. The other thought I had was this new Rock Crest Drive with the influx of people that are coming from Superior, we're talking about the kids to and from Superior from our schools, from the Louisville schools. It's also getting, there are people who work at Avista, who need to get to that side of the property, they're going to come over 88th, and they're going to want to go down that Rock Crest, and they might even be working, some of the biotech buildings in there. They're going to want to do that. And it looks like it's not part of Phase 1 in construction, it's toward the end, so a lot of, that's all going to be, isn't it?
They said, two weeks ago, they said they're all going to do it at the fall same time.
Oh, you're going to do the Rock Crest? Okay, sorry. Yeah, it's good that your memory was better than mine that night. Okay, so that'll go through. It's windy, I don't know how, I think I saw Roundabout proposed in there as well, which would slow, kind of, the concept is to slow people down a little bit at some points. We're approving this with, with the roads. I would really like to make sure that Dillon is not going to stay a one-lane road headed westbound, or headed eastbound, and that we are not going to bog that down as it is. Well, when I come here on Tuesday night, and at 5:00, I will have to sit at least through one light to turn left on public, because Dillon is backed up. And so that's not going to get better, that's going to get worse, and I'm very, very concerned about the somewhat 8,000 residents who live on the west side of town, 5,000, let her represent, that are going to run into problems trying to get to this new proposed area and this new site, if we're not going to expand that early. I, I appreciate, Director Sakaro, you had mentioned, I think, that it is in the plans to widen the road, and it could be something that is done sooner if it's found necessary. Is that correct?
So you're talking about widening Dillon Road?
Dillon, between 88th and 96th, to help that whole flow.
Right. So it could be done sooner if the city decides to do it sooner. I think there's some intersection improvements planned with this project. I don't think it's all going to four lanes as part of this project. I think there's, there's been a lot of discussion about this. There's also some, you know, sometimes keeping constrained roads can be preferable. I know not for emergency access, but for the character of the area, as long as they function. And so when traffic goes two ways into the campus instead of one way, a lot of the congestion that you experience now at 88th is not going to be there. Now, in the long term, there'll be more, more traffic. So I think what I'm getting at is having a guarantee, if it gets bad enough, the city will expand that also, but that's going to be something in the future. I think you're asking, should it happen with this project?
Yeah, why wait until we see what's coming? I mean, I, I think we see it coming.
So, so another thing to keep in mind, sorry, it's been a long night. It's 11:15. It's taken me a little longer to process. The other thing to keep in mind that I wanted to mention is, when we're, when we look at development holistically here at the city, and we figure out how to pay for development, and how do we take care of regional transportation infrastructure, you know, we require the developer to build certain infrastructure. If we wouldn't build it but for that development is one of the lenses that we look at. Certainly everything within their development. We've looked outside the development and said, even with background traffic, that's something that you're causing to happen. We have transportation impact fees. So when the development comes in, the city actually gets funds for regional transportation improvements. So I think what I'm getting to is that if the city felt in the future that they wanted to expand Dillon Road because it was getting too congested, and the level of service wasn't acceptable, and all of those reasons, the city is collecting money from this development to make regional transportation improvements. So we, we look at, we look at different lenses of whether the developer should build certain infrastructure, or should the city collect impact fees and maybe build infrastructure in the future. So I don't know that, you know, I can't make a judgment on if the city wants to make that a four-lane road immediately or in the future, but that's how we're set up as a city to help pay for those types of future infrastructure improvements.
Is there enough impact funding that we're receiving to help us pay for?
Probably wouldn't pay for that, but the idea with impact funding is that they pay for their proportional share. So the congestion on Dillon Road would be coming from lots of different areas, and over, you know, so we might be getting impact funds from Carrato Tech Center and others. So that's a convoluted answer to your question at 11:20 almost now, but yeah.
It's just, it's difficult for me to, to, to sit here and say, you know, I understand the importance of campus, but I also understand that if we're moving, and, and part of the proposal is considering the fact that the impact that we'll have with Avista being on the, on the other side of Redtail Ridge, and what that means for everybody on the west side of town, and how do we get to it? How do the people who work there? You know, there's a lot of shift work, there's, so it, I think that the impact that we're seeing is actually, in these reports, is underestimated as far as what's going to be happening on Dillon, when we no longer have, when all these people have to go from the hospital, that normally go there every day, they're going to be going down Dillon, plus all the residents who now have to keep going down Dillon. I think it's going to add more than just 3% to that, is my concern, and I think it's going to happen really quickly. And it's not part of the conversation today in this preliminary plat, and I feel like it should be.
I also want to say, the, the hospital's not part of the plat. I know the hospital's announced that they have a contract on the property, and they want to move there, and they intend to move there, but, you know, until they come with their PUD and they actually get a building permit, we don't know that they're going to, they're going to move there. There will be, you know, the, the parcel that they want to move to, with this development, there would be multiple ways to access. You could go down campus and then down Sorrel, or you can go down Rock Crest, or you can go around to Dillon to 96. So there's lots of different ways, and I think from an emergency access standpoint, having multiple ways to get into a hospital is probably desirable overall for emergency access.
Okay.
Well, and we know for sure that if we don't agree to move that forward, there will be, there will be...
No Avista.
No Avista. Or even, I mean, there'd be no, a lot of things, but, I mean, it's not going to fix the problem necessarily. I think it's an important concern. I appreciate the director actually raising that way of, I mean, that partial solution of the financing. Yes, ma'am? Go ahead.
I was going to add, but I don't think I need to anymore.
Oh, all right. Yes, Councilmember Fay.
I just want to mention that the emergency vehicles in particular currently get to Avista by going up 88th. And instead of turning right to go into the Avista parking lot that exists, they could continue on 88th to a street that would go through Redtail to the hospital, and that would provide two different access points for emergency vehicles. I'm wondering, I see our police chief, or our fire chief rather, sitting out in the entryway. He could maybe mention how, how he would prefer to access a hospital in an ambulance.
John Wilson, Louisville Fire Protection District. To answer your question, we go lights and sire, but multiple ways. So we're not the only outfit that uses Avista. North Metro uses them, Lafayette uses them, AMR uses them, there are a lot of different, different departments that use Avista to take patients there. So there are different ways of getting into a new Avista hospital in the southeast corner of this property. Currently, there is only one way to get to Avista primarily, and that is either Dillon to 88th, and then, and then to the hospital. So this, this would make it a lot easier to get there. I do agree that it would take someone that's going to drive themselves to the hospital a little bit longer, but I hope that if it was something very serious, like heart attacks, strokes, and that sort of things, they would be calling us. I think we had this conversation. They would really be calling us so we could treat them while we're transporting them to the hospital.
I don't mean to be argumentative, but I'm so sorry. There, there are cases, though, where sometimes somebody knows they're, they themselves would normally only be four minutes from the hospital, and it actually is more prudent in sometimes, because it would take longer for an ambulance to get to them than it is to get to the hospital. So that's where I, that's kind of the mind thought, I just wanted to clarify, because I do appreciate and I understand that comment, and you're right, I will put it on the record, you should call 911 if you have an emergency.
Thanks.
I, I just want to point out that, I think there's a lot of focus on basically coming from the golf course up Dillon, and then accessing, but of course, as a Ward 1 representative, a huge part of our city will be coming up 96, and it'll be way faster, right? And so the location will be faster, and even, like was pointed out, is coming up Dillon, you can keep going in Dillon, you can turn and then go on campus, you can turn and then go on Rock Crest, so you have lots of ways to get there, not just Dillon. That may not be the most efficient. You can turn right and left, and I think it would be maybe an additional minute or two, instead of taking a right on campus to take a left on campus. I think the roads exist in a, in a good way to move that traffic, and staff says the proposal would complete the Campus Drive extension, and it would significantly reduce congestion at Dillon and 88th Street, and 88th and Campus. So we'd have less traffic at those spots than we do today, so better, better ability to get through those spaces according to the traffic analysis and staff's analysis of the traffic. So I mean, I think, short term, it's going to be less busy, because we have so many more roads in that area, not more busy. That's one of the things I like a lot about the proposal, is just that 88th, in general, on Dillon and Campus, will be less congested with the new roads, not more congested. So I'm hopeful that everyone will get to hospital faster, even the ones coming from the golf course. We'll see.
And everybody on the west side.
And everybody on the west side of town.
All right. So far, we've got, and I'm looking again back at the, the three sets of issues that we have before us. We've already, I think, have consensus that the, an agreement that the plat conforms to all the requirements of the title, which is 16, I think, yeah, section 16, 12075, and then whether approval of the plat will be consistent with the city's comp plan, applicable zoning requirements and other applicable federal straight and city laws. We've got consensus that that is also met for purposes, or for reasons stated in the staff report. And the last piece of this, which we've been talking about now for about the last hour, is whether the proposed subdivision will promote the purposes set forth in 1604, 020 of the code, and comply with the standards set forth in Chapter 16, dot 16 of the code in this title. I think that with some, maybe some conditions, where we may be at a point where we can get to a, a motion, and then, I guess I'd like to propose a motion, and then we can talk about that, and add to it, and so forth. So I'll, I'll take a stab at it, and then we can amend as necessary, which I think is a good way of...
And mayor?
Yeah, we need to close the hearing, don't we?
Correct.
Thank you.
It's not in the criteria, but could we make a condition that it goes through Planning Commission before it comes to us, like these things usually do, the final plat? No?
So again, the conditions of preliminary plat approval need to relate to the criteria...
Specifically.
For preliminary plat.
Okay. Question answered?
Yeah, I just had to say it out loud for the room. Thank you.
So finally, closing the public hearing. You're with me for just a moment, let me get to the... Okay. I would move passage of resolution number 80, series 2023, a resolution approving the Redtail Ridge filing number one preliminary subdivision plat as it has been drafted by staff, including the following conditions. One, prior to the city council hearing on the final plat, the applicant shall provide approval from the Northwest Parkway Authority for the campus drive alignment. Two, prior to the city council hearing on the final plat, the applicant shall address all outstanding public works comments on the traffic and mobility study. Three, that there be a, an agreement, let me think how to put this, that we ensure that there's an agreement with Boulder Valley School District concerning, pardon me?
The right of way.
The right of way. And I'm going to stop for, hold on for a minute. And in addition, that there be an amended, an amendment to the current agreement concerning gradings that would require the grading to, not to occur for a period of four months from, from the final plat. Well, for, I guess we're, at this point, probably the preliminary plat, pardon me. From tonight? From tonight. Do we have a second?
I will second.
Are there friendly amendments?
Well, I just have a question about the last one. My understanding from the conversation was that it was, that it would be problematic to make a condition of approval to amend an agreement that's already in existence that is before, my understanding from your comments, City Attorney, was that that would be problematic to have that last part.
Well, what I advised is that the city council would need to relate that back to a criteria because they do have a contractual right to be able to
Right.
early grade. Councilmember Hamilton suggested that the criteria in
N and S.
N and S, I'm looking for the section number, 1604020, subsections N and S, would not be met if they graded within four months of tonight. Is that, that's the motion that's on the
Well put.
So that adding that condition helps the application meet those two criteria. So it's a question of whether you as a council find that to be so.
Oh.
If you agree.
I don't think we need to do, we can agree to it as a stipulation in the, as a condition.
The applicant's counsel is just assuring that they agree to that four-month period.
Understood, but I'm going on what you said to us earlier, which is we still need an agreement in order to put, make it part of the conditions, we need to make an additional finding. Is that still correct?
That would be my recommendation.
Yeah, so did you, you seconded it?
I did.
Would you like to propose an additional finding for our resolution?
I think it was, no.
No?
Do I need to?
That's what the
You can do that. I missed the additional finding. Oh, sorry, okay, based, just based on S and N, is that what you mean? In that we find that last piece to be necessary based on meeting the criteria in subsections S and N of, help me, 16
That the application wouldn't meet those two criteria
Without, without that delay.
Without a four-month
1612, without that delay. Is that sufficient?
Yeah.
For staff? City Attorney, is that clear enough?
Yes, I think that's fair.
Are there other friendly amendments? Councilmember Hamilton.
So I'll lean on you to word this appropriately, Mr. Mayor, but we have not addressed the safe passage for children.
Hmm.
And that is in order for the applicant to meet 1604020K.
And what are you, what is the condition that you're proposing?
The condition that I'm proposing is that they come with a detailed plan about how they're going to get kids safely over to school from the south trail, the trail coming from south to north.
You think I'll let my, so if I'm, and it's
K.
That the condition be added that, absent a detailed plan for safe passage of children, including not just the kids from Monarch High School, but Monarch K through A across campus drive, the application would not meet 16, section 16, point 04020.
Correct. That can be the basis of the condition. I think the condition can simply read that with the final plat application, or the final plat application will include a detailed plan of how to get kids to school from the south trail. I mean, you have it on the record that the basis for that is 1604020K.
Very good.
That criteria.
You accept it? Do you accept the amendment? Or do I go first?
Yeah, I accept that.
I also accept that.
City Attorney, you have been kind of taking, I think, if I'm, if I'm, my observation is correct, you have been writing down these various conditions and maybe
Rob and I will finalize the resolution.
Plus they're recorded.
And it's recorded.
For the purpose of the motion and of voting on the motion, which would be next, it would be helpful for you to read back, if you could, the essence, if not the exact terms of the conditions.
The new condition in resolution number 80 numbered three is that the final plat application will include a current agreement with the Boulder Valley School District regarding the right of way. Sorry, my note just says BVSD right of way. Number four is amend the GDP agreement for grading not to occur for a period of four months from the effective date of this resolution. And number five would be the final plat application shall include a plan, a detailed plan for safe passage for children, how to get kids from school, to school from the south trail.
Did you refer to GDP amendment?
GDP agreement amendment, sorry.
Thank you, thank you. All right.
Left a word out.
Just want to make sure.
Yeah, yeah, no, it's the agreement.
Yes, Director.
Sorry to bring in this complication, but I'm not sure what the mechanism is for actually amending the agreement between now and the final plat, because I think the intent is that they wouldn't grade until they came back with the final plat, which they think would be four months. So are you, just to be clear, are you asking that we come back with a GDP agreement amendment in the interim to, okay, so we would have to put that on a future agenda before you get the final plat?
Correct.
Correct.
That's my understanding.
Is that going to delay, is there an easier way to do that where a GDP amendment is not required?
GDP agreement?
Agreement, excuse me, sorry.
Easy to drop that middle word. I'm not sure I understand your question.
Well
I mean, you can only act in a public meeting.
I know that, yeah. I mean, what, I guess what I'm, and I'm sorry, my brain is operating a little more slowly now, too, but if, what I'm, I guess what I'm getting at is if we were to vote in favor of the amended or the resolution as we've amended it, the next step is final plat? Or is the next step bringing back an agreement?
The next step is final plat, but in the interim, the GDP amend, agreement amendment could be placed on an upcoming council meeting agenda in the interim.
All right, very good. I think that's, I think that's fine. Does anybody have any concern about that? Mr. Painter?
Thank you, Mary Lay. I just want to make sure we have the nomenclature right here. The agreement that contains the references to the ability to grade potentially early is the Planned Community Zone District Zoning Agreement. It's not an amendment to the GDP at all.
Sorry, it was referred to as the GDP agreement.
Okay, and I thought it might be shorthand for that, but if what we're doing is just amending that or putting our ability to invoke that provision on hold, that's fine, but it's Planned Community Zone District Zoning Agreement. I did not title it. This is before my time.
Because you got yourself up to speed during the course?
I did, yes.
Of the meeting, I understand. Thank you. All right. Are we, I'm unclear where we are right now. Got a motion second. Is there any other discussion about motion?
I just like speak in favor of it and real quickly to the developers. This is not like an accusation, so don't take it that way. Very important that, between staff and you all, that there are no bait and switch moments as we get to final. I don't expect that, but the public expects that the things we talked about today in the preliminary plat are going to come back in the final plat, and that we're going to see, you know, as little grading as possible, as, you know, much protection of the wildlife and a really robust SIA, again, that's shorthand for subdivision improvement agreement, right, that that has the real meat as to these commitments and that we're expecting, you know, we've heard a lot about Lead Silver, we've heard a lot about Fitwell, we've heard a lot about those things, and we expect to see those come back in that commitment form, and that I will be very surprised if they don't, right? And surprise is not great in the next round, so I just wanted to state that clearly.
Appreciate that. Other comments from council members? The only thing I would say is I'm planning on voting in favor of this. I think there's, I think this is a good resolution. I think that the contents of the application are complete and meet the other criteria according to the law of the city of Louisville and the rules that pertain to this, so, subject to the conditions that we're adding to the resolution. So with that, Clerk Booth, do you want to take a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Fahy?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Dickinson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bierman?
Yes.
Councilmember Hefner?
Oops, sorry.
Councilmember Lay?
Yes.
Councilmember Kern?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes. Look forward to seeing the final plat and concurrent agreement. Yes, I know that, I know. All right, so next item on the agenda, which is 8C, is, pardon me? Okay. May I, may I continue? Is ordinance number 1869, series 2024, an ordinance approving the vacation of threes that's located on Lot 1, dedicated by the Empire Road subdivision, 1303 Empire Road, first reading, and setting a public hearing on March 5, 2024 at 6:00 PM? Can I have a motion?
I move that we approve ordinance number 1869, series 2024.
Second.
Oh, let's see, we just need a voice vote on this, so. All in favor?
Judy has a, sorry, Judy has a question.
I had a question.
Oh.
Sorry, I didn't really, we were just going to
I didn't realize we were just going to consent it.
We just set a public hearing.
Oh, my apologies.
No, it's all right.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. City Attorney's report.
I have no report, thank you.
Council comments, committee reports, and identification of future agenda items. With that, we're adjourned.
14 minutes early?